Good morning. It is eight thirty and I am going to call
Good morning. It is eight thirty and I am going to call the committee of the whole meeting of April sixteenth to order. We have an agenda that's in front of us. Are there any additions to the agenda? Counselor Christie.
If not, I'll move the agenda as presented.
Okay, Counselor McGee.
I just decided that this should be a closed session thing, so I have an update. Yeah, between parties.
Third-party business?
That's the one. Thank you.
Section sixteen, maybe? I have laminated sheet. Section sixteen, I was correct. So, section sixteen, third-party business. Okay, are there any other additions? Counselor Christie.
I tried to cut her off at the pass. I'll amend my motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We have the minutes from the February twentieth committee of the whole meeting that were pre-circulated. Are there any corrections, errors? Counselor Phobes.
In those minutes, I had asked for the unsightly bylaw to come back today. It's not on the agenda, so could you just let me know when we would be addressing that at the next Cal meeting?
Okay, so, Mr. Hogan.
The Counselor Phobes had have to go back and take a look at that and get a... I'll get the answer back to you.
Okay, thank you. So, that's... That was item two point four in the minutes from last meeting. So, I don't think it specified exactly which meeting, though, did it? So... Okay. All right. Okay, so, Mr. Hogan, you have undertaken to get back to us on that?
Yes, we just pulled up the motion. It wasn't directed that it be back at this meeting, but we will get a timeline to you.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. All right, are there any other items regarding the minutes? Okay, what's the wish of council? I'm looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Penner.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the minutes from the February twentieth committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the February twentieth committee of the whole meeting. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. In the new business for this meeting, item two point one, vegetation cutting request and service level review. And welcome, Ms. Sherlock. And...
Good morning.
Good morning, and anytime you're ready.
Absolutely. So, I bring before the committee of the whole this morning a vegetation cutting request as well as a service level review. So, in the background, in February, the Wimborn Community Center reached out to discuss the possibility of hiring Neahill County Park Services for vegetation cutting, so mowing and weed whipping, around the community center and Ball Diamond. Since the department does not currently offer this service, administration wanted to take this opportunity to discuss the potential service options for council's consideration or for the committee's consideration. At present, Neahill County Park Services is responsible for vegetation cutting at forty-eight locations, including parks, cemeteries, county utility sites, county buildings, and county-owned lands in four hamlets of Wimborn, Huxley, Torrington, and Swallow. The department has a team of four mowing staff members who manage the vegetation at these sites using a rotational and priority-based approach. The prioritization of a location can depend on various factors, such as the occurrence of specific events, such as funerals or community gatherings. Additionally, not all sites are serviced in every rotation due to the differences in vegetation growth rates per site. Administration would also like to bring to light that some private lands are included in the above-mentioned rotations, including four cemeteries, Lutheran, Lumney, Remfer, and Mian, the Catholic side, as well as the Huxley Community Center and Curling Rink. The four cemeteries pay an annual fee of $200 each, which, based on the information we've collected, has remained unchanged since it was established in 1987 through a council motion and subsequent letters to the groups owning the sites. Per the original information provided to council and the... Per the original information provided to council and the... And located in the leathers to the cemetery ownership groups in 1987, the original fee was implemented to cover the service delivery of only vegetation cutting as the county does not obtain any revenue from plot sales. Although notes indicating verbal agreements by three cemeteries and one letter of agreement from another... from the other cemetery, there are no formalized service agreements for the four cemeteries or any other non-county-owned properties. Comments relayed in the council minutes from 1991, one church indicated that they were concerned about the burden of fees on their budget. Administration at this time has not approached the cemetery ownership groups to discuss a potential increase to the rates or the addition of formal agreements as administration wanted to discuss this item prior to... Prior with council, prior to any conversations taking place. The vegetation cutting in the area around the Huxley Community Center and Curling Rink has been a part of the mowing route for many years. The only council correspondence was found in a 2011 council motion to complete the mowing of the Ball Diamond and the surrounding area. This space is currently owned by Neahill County and staff currently mow the area around the Ball Diamond while the interior operations are managed by the Huxley Community Association. Additionally, in July of 2019, a request from the Swallow Community Association was brought forward to council to mow the area around the Swallow Hall. This request was denied through a council motion. So, that being the background on things, we'll move into the discussion unless there's any clarifications anyone would need on the background.
Anyone have any questions at this point? Counselor Phobes.
Just because I didn't sit on council at that time, why did you decide as a collective not to mow for the Swallow?
Our historian has said... Thank you for that, Deputy Reeve Whitstock.
Well, I'm... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Probably... I thought... I think it was just a motion that was made that we didn't mow it. I don't know what the explanation behind it was, but that being said, the motion was made not to go ahead and mow.
Okay, Counselor Penner.
I think we had a discussion, if I remember correctly. We give these community centers financial help.
Okay, thank you.
So, and we can still discuss it, like, you know, we have a lot of community centers and is this something that we... We'll probably discuss it even more here soon. If you have more than twenty rentals, we're prepared to work with you. If you only have less than ten, maybe not, but that's a discussion. I think that was part of the discussion back then. We already give them a grant to help, which was to go to help towards insurance, was their biggest expense, and that's why we gave it initially, I think, or added to it. But that's what I remember.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Mr. Hogan, did you want to add at all?
Through you, Mr. Chair. My recollection of that discussion is that the Counselor Penner is correct. That was part of it. We're just going back and seeing about if we can find the old RFD for that meeting. My recollection as well is that there was some concern expressed that if we started doing this, what would the time and work commitment be? If we did it... And that's, you know, part of the basis of today's discussion, I think, is that, you know, we've isolated, we are doing this in one area, but we're not doing it in another. What is the service level council wants or expects? Because if we're going to do it for one hall, then it should be a formal program.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
And just to add to that...
Go ahead.
I do have the RFD from the original discussion. And it did bring up those points, just that it would be an increased level of service for the community of Swallow, adding to those mowing sites as far as benefits, and then could be included in the mowing maintenance, and then the disadvantages, that it was not a service that was currently offered to other hamlet halls, and there's no policy or fee structure, so...
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions before we move on? Counselor Christie?
Just a comment. I just Googled $200 in 1987. Today is $555.
Are you saying there's a change in value since then? Appreciate the clarification. All right, I guess, Ms. Sherlock, if you want to go on.
For sure. So, going into the discussion options, benefits, disadvantages, and other considerations section. So, cost comparisons. We could not find a local company that would be able to deliver the service. We could find other companies coming from the cities. Anybody that would be local would be an individual offering it, probably with their own home equipment, and that wasn't a direct business that we were able to source. So, the... Those, like I said, we've heard of some of them via word of mouth. They are out there, but they're not something that we were able to track down.
Just before you go on from there, we should talk to one of the young entrepreneurs that worked through Community Futures who established a mowing business.
That is also coming back this year to stay in that program, so...
And there we go. Yeah, and I do know, like, there are some of those young ones that are in towns that are able to do it, but sometimes getting from location to location is difficult. You need to have the trailer, so... Yeah, so... So, yes, moving into the current county program costs. So, the... Our best calculations by our staff time and equipment, vehicles, those costs, we've calculated out to be approximately $355.60 per hour for the four staff mowers and whippers, as well as $2.30 per kilometer for the transportation of fuel and trucks and trailers. So, this... And this is for the current vegetation cutting program that completes the forty-eight sites on a three-point-five-to-four-week rotation. Moving into the private cemeteries, the current revenue for private cemeteries, as I said, is $200 each annually. And those, you can see in the chart here, we've got the Lutheran, which is on 21, just north of Troschu, Lumney, which is kind of straight east and then a little bit north in the country here from Three Hills, Remfer, which is over by Torrington, and then Mian, the Catholic side, just south of Troschu there. So, I've put, as I said, these are our best calculations for estimated costs as to what it actually comes out to, this average cutting time. Each site is different based on the vegetation and how many headstones, how much weed warping versus mowing, things like that. And so, through the years, we've tracked how long it takes to do each site. And so, that's where that average cutting time comes from, calculated out at the cost per cut, and then the average times mown per season. You will see that Mian is five on there, and that's... Mian grows very, very fast versus Lumney is very, very slow. It seems strange, considering they're not too far apart, but they just have completely different grasses. And so, we've calculated out here the estimated total cost per season, coming down to... For each site, and then coming down to a total cost per year, given the... Subtracted by the amount of revenue we receive, that $800. So, the current subsidized amount we're putting towards these cemeteries is $10,215. As far as options for the cemeteries, option one would be keeping the rates the same, seeing the costs above. Option two would be increasing the rate to $200 per cut. So, that would increase our revenue to $3,400 and reducing that subsidized amount to $7,615. Option three would be increasing it to $300 per hour. And so, that would put the revenue at $1,860. The subsidized amount would be $9,155. Option four would be increasing the rate to $400 per year. The revenue for that would be $1,600, with the subsidized amount being $9,415. So, that is the cost for the private cemeteries. Increasing the mowing rates would allow the municipality to recover more of the costs associated with providing this service by reducing the subsidized amount. Alternatively, some of the comments relayed from 1991, the one church did indicate that they were concerned about the burden of fees on their budget. So, official... Regardless of the option chosen, it is administration's recommendation that official service agreements be implemented for any work done on non-county-owned sites to mitigate legal and financial liabilities and clarify the expected levels of service for both parties. Are there any questions on the cemeteries side before I move into the community centers?
Yes, Counselor McGee.
I just want to clarify that I understand correctly. We do not have any other publicly-owned cemeteries in our borders that don't use this at all.
No, we do. We... There is... So, one of the appendixes has... I will bring it up here. A list of cemeteries. So, we mow just over half of the cemeteries within the county. And... Well, we own over half of them. And then, we mow those four, and then there are a couple Hutterite ones, the Village of Car... The Carbon ones, a Village of Acme, Linden, and there is one listed as the Evangelical Lutheran Zion, which is just down the road from Remfer, but I believe it's on private land, so... There. No, that's okay. Yeah, it's just in the attachment there. Yes, so, there are a few that we don't. Like I said, a few of them, they're all listed out because this is listed by parcel. So, Carbon is split out into three different parcels. And then... Yeah, and then the couple Huxley... Or the Hutterite ones. And the... Yeah.
My apologies. You gave us an excellent package. For whatever reason, I got scrolled all the way down to that one.
No worries. Yeah, so, there are some that we don't mow. And as per why the ones we mow and the ones we don't mow exist, there is not a record of when that started. Prior to the eighty-seven motion, we... It was clear that we were mowing them just without any cost recovery on those, so... Or any revenue, but...
Just through the chair, through the Reeve, I should say. Maybe at... When they came forward, they were struggling, you know what I mean? But I guess going forward here, whatever we set should be for all of them, you know what I mean? We're not going to mow them all, but if they come forward and say we just don't have the volunteers anymore, we've got to have a set fee, so...
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. With the other sites that are there, the impact to the operation is not yet known, so they're... Being in Cal today, we're hoping to get an understanding so we can have those conversations with the church and see where they're expected. conversations with the church and see where their expectation or future needs are, or if they still want to proceed. So at this time, you're absolutely correct, creating some consistency in the program to allow all, all cemeteries potentially to be partisan of this, but the total impact of incorporating those has not been determined in this RFD at this time, to understand the full impact of including all of them. That would be something, if we had the conversations with the other churches and they would want to participate, we'd have to bring that back to council for consideration.
Okay, thank you for that. Just wanted some clarification, your option three on page seven of our package says increase rate to $300 per hour?
Yes.
And then the revenue is stated as $1,860, over the year would be actually over $8,000, so that would be revenue per cut, or how are you figuring that number? Because if we do four cuts, say at the Lutheran cemetery of two hours, 300 bucks an hour, that's $600, four cuts in the year is $2,400, so I'm just seeking clarification.
My apologies, that must have gotten missed when I had been changing formats. So yes, you would be correct in your calculations.
Okay, so potential revenue there would be $8,040 if we did the number of cuts and charged the $300 per hour.
Yeah.
And then I had a question related to community halls, because we have a significant number of community halls, not just cemeteries as well, that are listed in your RFD, and we currently are only cutting at Huxley Community Center and Curling Rink, right?
Yes.
And so all the other halls that are within Neill County, the rural ones and the ones within the hamlets, are all currently managing their own mowing?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just gonna jump in, sorry. I'll give you, we should give you the opportunity to go on to do the community hall discussion here, but just as long as we're happy or finish up with our discussion here with the cemeteries, can you tell me on a process of, so say like Arthur Vale, it was a private, and then we just almost just had to take it over because it fell into this, you know, it was just untidy. So what is the process, say, if Lutheran wanted to give us this cemetery?
So I believe that that would go through planning, and it would be similar to the tax deferral program where they would hand over ownership to the county, and so then the county would retain ownership of those lands and take over the property, not only the maintenance and mowing, but also the plot sales and the repairs on that. Arthur Vale is the most recent to do that, it hasn't happened to any of the other cemeteries in, for a long, long time, but I do know that the, with the Arthur Vale situation, I believe the association retained some sort of care of the building itself, from my understanding, so.
I just, I want to throw it out there because the volunteering population, they are getting older, and volunteering isn't as big a thing as it was back in the day, kind of thing, and I just think, to keep it in the back of our mind, that we, there may be more that we are going to have to maintain, take care of-
Yeah.
-going forward, not necessarily this year, but.
Yeah, yeah, and it is a possibility in the future. What that looks like, I believe, would be different for each situation, considering the groups and their level of ownership and who's listed on title, that one I know with Arthur Vale was quite tricky because of the ownership through the Catholic Church.
Well, and back in the day, there was a home on every quarter, as to say, or every section, there was a home, but nowadays it's not, so the people aren't there, so there's not as much use of some of these rural cemeteries, so I just got to keep that in the back of our mind, that we may eventually get them, but I think there should be an increase, for sure. Not outrageous, but there should be an increase.
Okay, I guess if there's no more questions on cemeteries, okay, one more, Councilor Phobes.
Mine has to do with your staffing. If we take on more, do you have the staff in order to do these jobs? Because I worry from an ASB perspective, sitting on that board, I'm a little worried that you might not have enough staff to take on more jobs currently.
Yes, absolutely, and so later in this, I will address the staffing in regards to if, because the cemeteries are ones that already exist, it's, it would be strictly for the ones that we currently do, not to be taking on anymore, as well as I have only put in here the ones, the community centers in the hamlets, because those are the ones that we believe at this time, considering we are in those hamlets, we are completing work right next to those spaces, that it would be feasible for us to complete, it would extend our mowing rotation, so from three and a half to four weeks is really all it would, it would take, but there would be an impact, absolutely, so.
Okay, Mr. Gannon, thank you through the chair, I just want to add on to some of that conversation is, within the report, the specifics of the community centers and the cemeteries, we do believe with the current program that's in place, and the, and the locations, as Ms. Fallon, Sherlock mentioned, if, we do have the capacity, however, if we do take on the other community centers, I believe the rotation would not meet the requirements of the growth rate, and may require the additions of additional resources. So I just want to caution that, depending on what the conversation entails today, we can explore those options and bring that back to council for consideration, to understand what level of programming might be feasible or being considered.
Okay, thank you for that. Shall we move on?
Okay. So moving into the community center specifics here, so the, I have the Huxley, Huxley Hall and Curling Rink, so we don't own around the hall and the curling rink, we currently do mow that, just from organizational historicals, that's just kind of been in the rotation, and so there's no charge taking place for that one. So there's that one, the Wimbourn Hall and Ball Diamond, so that's the one that's being requested, requested for information, and of that, within that Ball Diamond, I will just note, we do actually, are we able to go to the attachment that has the map there? Just, I will just highlight that quick. The, the map ones? For Wimbourn.
Yeah.
So, it's a bit of an unusual division there. In the far corner, we actually own a portion of the Ball Diamond there, and so I, that was just the way that it was planning, had put it out at that point, so, yeah, just for clarification, that is the area that would be added to, would be, currently we do outside of that area, we do outside of the Ball Diamond, kind of up the ditch there to the corner, and then up to the sheds there, that's, that's the space that we mow, and then they take care of within the Ball Diamond and around the hall. So, we can go back to that chart. So, and then I've also included in here, because they are within hamlets, and, and like I said, Swalwell had requested it at one point, and Torington may, may request as well. So I had included those ones in there, in order to do all of those, the estimated additional cost for four cuts at each of those sites would be $9,148. And so we've listed some additional options here for taking on community centers, so option five would be subsidizing the full cost, option six would be $300 an hour for four cuts, option seven would be $600 a year for four cuts, and option eight would be declining to do any of the vegetation cutting.
Okay, are there any questions right now, or?
Okay. I'll just move into the rest of this here.
Yep, go ahead.
So the community centers listed in table two are located in the hamlets that are already part of the existing rotation, and could be integrated with a lesser impact to the overall program, extending, extending the cutting rotation by about a week, depending on the rate of vegetation growth or special event requests. There are five other local community centers via the attached list here, that are not included in the current mowing locations, that could bring forward similar requests, but not included as extending beyond the current mowing locations may require additional resources and increased service costs. As far as options for service delivery models, kind of the two that we have come out with would be agreeing on a minimum number of cuts per year at a specified amount, with additional cuts at an increased cost, or cutting by request as it fits into the program's schedule and availability without a guarantee of reaction time. The addition of hamlet community centers to the cutting program would contribute to the continued care and maintenance of the communities these centers are a part of. This service is often difficult for volunteer groups to source, especially locating individuals with the proper equipment, time, and especially the adequate insurance coverage to complete this role in a public space. Alternatively, it would be an increased service level to the Parks Department that would have to be clearly defined through policy and an adjustment to the master rates by law. Should additional requests come from other community centers located outside of the hamlets or other private cemeteries in the county, additional considerations would have to be, take place and be brought forth to council. At this point, administration's recommendations are to enter into signed service agreements clarifying rates and service level specifications for any non-county-owned site where vegetation cutting takes place. Selecting option one of table one, adjusting the private cemetery mowing to $200 per cut for more balanced revenue subsidy, selecting option six in table two, and offering the four community centers within the hamlets, the option to enter into service agreements with the county for $300 per hour for vegetation cutting. And then just going into the financial and staff implications, so the potential financial impacts are detailed in tables one and two of this report, may also include other potential costs, depending on alternative options that you may discuss, that have not been detailed in this report. The options and financial impacts will be brought back to council for consideration in a future council meeting. And staffing with the existing staff and resources, the addition of the four hamlet community centers would extend the cutting rotation to approximately four to four and a half weeks, depending on vegetation growth. Should council want to take on the community center mowing while retaining or decreasing the length of the cutting rotation, then additional resources would be needed and could be determined and brought back to council. Are there any further questions?
Councilor Phobes.
Of the $2.30 per kilometer, how much are we actually charging? Because I'm not struggling, but I'm just, for clarity purposes, the fuel, the truck, and the trailers are already being done by the ratepayers of our county, are paying into that, we pay into updating them as they come needing to be redone or renewed. I guess my question is, is what exactly would the kilometer price be? Because I know that's all-inclusive, so if you were just charging for kilometers, not the fuel, the truck, or the people using it, what would be the mileage? Because we get paid mileage as council to go and travel to places, we know what that's set by, what is the actual mileage would be attached to this without the truck, the people, or the other attached? That's what I'm looking for.
This is strictly the equipment, the fuel, and the people. There is no added cost.
Go ahead, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. The individual cost for that, we can, we can break down, we don't have the breakdown with us right now, but the cost includes the capital investment, the maintenance, all that is inclusive within that cost. To separate that, we can bring that back to council for review, but I don't have that in front of me today. I do apologize.
May I ask for clarification? So when you're asking for that, you're asking so, without the people, without the fuel, without the trucks and trailers-
You're charging mileage to go out there and do it without those stuff on there?
Then that's, that's not included. That, the, what is included in there is the vehicles, the people, and the fuel in that price.
Maybe some people around the table could help me clarify my thoughts a little bit? I guess what I'm looking for is, is, right now, currently, we've already budgeted for all of these people to be out there, so for them to literally go from the cemetery, not even very few steps, to go into Wimbourn, that's what I'm saying. You're already there mowing?
Yes.
So you're gonna charge mileage to go from there to the Ball Diamonds?
No, sorry.
So that's where I need the kilometer thing was a little, I wasn't understanding.
Sorry, my, my apologies. No, that's, that's the price from Three Hills to Wimbourn. So we did not include the mileage for, for those sites, and as you can see, on these, on these sites, it's just the cost per cut of the mowing, not of the mileage.
So what you're saying is that currently in our mowing program, if we travel a kilometer, it's costing us $2.30 a kilometer, when we have the truck, the mowers, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
That's our cost for transportation?
Yes.
So if we were in Wimbourn, and we were already cutting the Neill County site, which is just south of the Ball Diamond, and we were to cut the Ball Diamond, there is no additional cost for transportation?
Yes, so through the chair, it would be, when we look at calculations for costs and cost recovery, we do calculate what our cost to site would be, but included in the, which is included in the cemetery outline there, table, table one, but in table two, we do not include mileage. So the, but the, they're-
So what you're saying is, on the community center calculations, there's no mileage, there's no transportation cost calculated into the per hour?
Yes.
Okay. So-
Yes.
If we were going to start to cut around community centers, we would be doing those community centers when we're already in those communities, doing the other mowing that we currently are doing?
Yes.
So, Councilor Penner?
But just for clarification, did we not say, unless there was a special request, like say, it's not in the rotation to go to Swalwell to do the sidewalks, or, you know, but there is a large function coming, and we've had a phenomenal year with rain, and then we need to get back there within the week or whatever, how do we allow for those kind of cuts? That's, that's where-
That's where the mileage and the extra cost-
That would be up for council if, if that was something that we wanted to charge, if there was a special request, and they wanted to charge for an additional travel, then yes.
But currently, in our, and I'm gonna go back to our cemetery rotation, if we, say we had been in Swalwell three weeks ago, and we weren't due to be there for another week, but there was going to be an internment in that cemetery, and there was a request, we would go back early-
Yep.
-usually, and mow, right?
Yep.
So they're not standing in ankle-high or knee-high grass for that internment. Currently, we're offering that service at no charge, they would, and so we would just go out as complimentary service to the family and the people involved in that. So, again, that would be something that we would do, and then that cemetery would just fall into the next rotation.
Yep.
So, even though we made a special trip, we aren't gonna go back on the normal rotation now, a week later, we're gonna wait till the next time around.
Yes. Through the chair, yes. So when we, when we do those rotations, they aren't strictly A, B, C, they are where we're determining the need is, and so if that cemetery's been done a week earlier than we were originally gonna go because of a service, then we would, we would just push that off into a later part of the rotation, so.
Mr. Hogan, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, to, through you, Mr. Chair, to hopefully provide some clarity, and I say that if I'm wrong on this, I'm sure that Mr. Gannon and Ms. Sherlock will correct me, is, when we look at these costs, we've, in the discussion- correct me, is when we look at these costs, we've, in the discussion, we've really honed in on the transportation component of it. These are simply program costs. So, whether that's in transport or you're actually mowing the cemetery or community hall, there's that per, there's a per-hour cost to that, right? Is whether you've got that piece of equipment, whether it's that truck or that mower, whether it's in transport or actually cutting, it's designated to that activity. So, for example, when you put that mower on the trailer behind the truck, you've got three pieces of equipment there that are going out. While they're going down the road, obviously, the mower's not in use, but the truck and trailer are. You get to site, the mower's in use, but the truck and trailer are sitting there waiting. But all three pieces of equipment are designated to that activity, and there's a cost associated with those even when they're not running. So, they might not be burning fuel, some of them, but there's still a capital cost that the tax base is putting into that, right? So, even though that pickup truck might not be moving, it's designated to that activity. It's not doing a different activity, right? So, when we look at the costs and how we put them together, it's really, think of it less as, it's not necessarily the transportation cost, that's simply the hour of operation cost, right? So, I believe Fallon, when you're putting forward that Wimbourn Hall and Ball Diamond, as we said, if we were coming from Three Hills, the time to get there, well, load up, get there, unload, do the cut, load back up, come back, that's the cost that it would actually take. Now, it is, when we're using that equipment, we are paying into the capital equipment plan, so some of that cost is already covered in there. But what this does in this costing is it gives you an idea of what that actual cost of a service is, even though you're paying a bunch of it already because the equipment is here, right? So, to give a different analogy, when we come up with, say, a cost of grading?
I'll be with you in a minute, Jerry.
When we come up with a cost of grading, we include the capital contribution of the grader. We don't take that out just because the grader's already here, right? So, we want to tell you that by virtue of having the grader and the operator and the fuel involved, every time that there's a grader moving, it's 150 an hour or whatever the actual cost is, right? I was just using that number for a point.
You understand?
Don't run out and quote that. Yeah. Yeah. So, that's what we're, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to portray here. So, there isn't a specific mileage cost that we have to get to site. It's just while that equipment's being used, that's what the program's actually costing you. But yeah, your earlier point, Counselor Phobes, that through the capital equipment plan, we are paying a portion of that cost by, through that plan.
I'll get this question.
Deputy Reeve Whitstock.
I was also going to mention that we've got four or five tech, mowing techs, that are sitting in the truck going to the job. They're getting paid whether they're sitting in the truck going to the job or whether they're sitting on the mower. So, that's an additional cost that's got to be incorporated into it also, I believe.
So, really, realistically, the number that you gave us earlier, Ms. Sherlock, the $355.60 per hour, that's what those things are costing us whether they're actually mowing or whether they're actually going down the road on the back of a trailer. Staff and vehicle and equipment costs are all calculated into that fuel. Everything's in that price.
Yeah.
So, okay. So, for the whole mowing program, all summer long, that's for every hour that that program's in place, we're paying $355.60 basically.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, are there comments? Was there other material you wanted to bring to us right now? Are you looking for our?
I'm looking for your discussion.
Feedback and direction? Okay, good. So, other comments, questions, discussion, feedback? Counselor Penner.
In a way, I'd like to see this decline. I think it would affect Huxley. They're already getting it for nothing, and we would have to pull back on them. If we said we were declining, I think, fair enough, we would mow around the water tower or behind the hole there, you know what I mean? But that we're already mowing our own stuff, but is the Ball Diamond, you know, like, we've got to really look at each location and make sure we don't lump them all in as one, because is there areas of that location that really Neale County does own we should be doing? So, I think it's so unfortunate that the volunteers aren't there, but like Community Futures is there for somebody to, even if it's a small, like, within the communities, to find somebody within your community to see who would like to start a little business or stuff like that. Or do you feel, has there been requests that our local halls, these four in our hamlets, are untidy? They need to be mowed more consistently or?
No. No, that's not the case at all.
Okay. Because I think this opens up a whole nother kettle of worms, because we have some very active rural community halls. Some are not, but some are. They should be given the same opportunity, you know? But that's, they're not on the route as to say that the mower's not in town. So, I think, I'd like to hear everybody's discussion.
Counselor McGee.
I really would echo exactly the same thing. In my opinion, if it's not our land, we don't need to be having a program to mow.
Okay, thank you for that. Ms. Sherlock, go ahead.
Through the chair, may I just ask for clarification when you say not our land? Because the cemeteries are not our land either, and we currently do mow those and collect revenue from them.
We collect revenue for mowing?
For mowing those four cemeteries, we collect $200 per year.
Yeah, no, I would say no. I mean all of it.
Okay, Counselor Cunningham.
So, I, if I'm understanding correctly, with the cemetery, so we're currently $200 a year, and we, administration is recommending we go to $200 per cut, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm 100% against that. The only way for cemeteries to increase their revenue is for, we know what the, we know how that is, right? So, I don't think that's anything we want to encourage. They don't have other options to generate revenue, right? And I think Counselor Penner mentioned earlier, there's probably going to come a time where a lot of these sites are going to be ours anyways. So, I guess, are we going to be happy with the $200 per hour a year? Take that, because probably eventually, they will be ours and we'll be responsible for taking care of them anyways. So, and, you know, just with what they are, the history, the legacy of the people that are buried there, I just don't want to see it as a revenue generating source. That is 100% not where I'm at. I will encourage those cemeteries, though. I know this came to me last year with alumni. If they are having an event or something there, because there was an event out at alumni last year that they requested a mow, I just please ask them to give us a heads-up more than a day in advance. But I do know that was successfully done last year, and I thank you again for having that done. So, but that's just my opinion on the cemeteries. I'm not in favor of increasing that.
So, you can take this comment in light of how it's meant, which is rather humorously. I was thinking parking and site tours and... No? Okay, all right.
They do it in New Orleans.
There's a lot, you know, I hate to say this, but there's a lot of history in those cemeteries. And I say that with all respect to the occupants of those places.
And a few, oh, sorry.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you were at, anybody that looked at our picture board yesterday at my rate pair meeting, that is true, there is some neat sites, because we have a pretty neat picture of the antelope that were at alumni cemetery last year. So, yes, there is some, a lot of them are very beautiful, Sarsapuce beautae.
Counselor Penner, and then Counselor McGee.
So, just further more to Counselor Cunningham, I don't have anything against the $200. I'd like to see a discussion held with those four cemeteries, because maybe they fully understand that, and they're prepared to pay 400 or 500 a year to keep their little community or cemetery. They've just been, they probably didn't even realize it hasn't been increased since then. I think we still need to have a discussion with them over the cemeteries. The cemeteries and the hall, to me, are two different things. So, at this point, I honestly think, have the discussion. We should come up with a figure here. Is it 400? Is it 500? Or we keep it at, you know, you get, you bring us back the feedback of what you heard from the administration or whoever they have with these little cemeteries, please.
Counselor McGee.
As someone who belongs to a church and had various churches, there is a governance body that oversees this above the actual parish of what's in our community, and I really struggle that we are taking on a governance body's responsibility. That's why, for me, churches, most churches have a plan established with that governance body of how to maintain all that is needed, and personally, I don't believe municipal government belongs in it.
Other comments? Just Counselor Christie.
I'm thinking it's part of our public service for me. I appreciate that it hasn't changed for 30 years, and we need to, we need to address that part for sure. But to walk away at this point, I think, would be a mistake. Whether it's $400 or $500 a year, I'm concerned about the hourly rate for sure. That, I'm sure that churches can't handle. But an inflationary, we've got to step somewhere. So, I think that's where I'm at. On the community centers, it's, for me, it's somewhat the same. If we're there already, I'm in favor of going ahead with it. If we have to go there, then I'm concerned. But if we're sitting on the other side of the fence, when I look at what these big mowers can cover in a hurry, I don't think we're adding a lot of time to the capacity that we have. But I don't want to go to a site where all by itself and start that, because we're not there, and that adds a lot of cost in the hurry.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. I just want to offer maybe a different viewpoint of community service, our portfolio. Most of these Ball Diamonds and areas within our community centers offer different events that other communities come to see, that come to explore our community and see how it's maintained, how people are treated, how we are within the community. As these community centers and the experience that we've had within the community is that the volunteer basis is dropping within not just this community, but within all communities that we've talked with. We want to maintain a viable and an attractable area for people to come, visit, live, work. This may be part of your decision matrix to understand that when we do the maintenance, it's consistent. We know it's being done. We know that it promotes that community in a positive way. It brings the community aspect and the resilience, the economic drivers in those areas to a standard that's maintained. Same thing within our churches. As most of you know, I come from a military background where, you know, our fallen deserve the same respect. And unfortunately, everybody is hurting, times are hard, but that level of care really does show to our roots and to our community as per the pillars within our strategic plan. So, those are just some of the items that we tried to consider when we brought this forward to council, to understand that we're trying to vision through council's strategic plan of potentially where you'd like to go. And I just wanted to add those few comments for your consideration.
Thank you for that. I guess a comment that I would make is, I'm not sure that I'm 100% in favor of a free service, because it'll become a what-about-me. And so, I think that we need to maintain some level of fee, and whether we think that's $400 or $500 a year, or we have a conversation and say, listen, you have to understand that it's inflation and costs are going up. We also have to keep in mind, there are cemeteries that are on our list that people are already maintaining. And there are cemeteries that aren't on our list that other communities within our boundaries are maintaining. So, I just caution us to say that I'm not sure that we want to go to a free service on cemetery mowing, and I think it's incumbent on us to have that conversation, to say, you need to understand that there's significant subsidization of what's happening here to maintain the cemetery, the four that we currently are maintaining without owning. And I think we need to have agreements. I think we need to understand what our obligations are and what the expectations are. And I agree, if somebody calls tomorrow morning and wants the cemetery cut today so that it can have an event tomorrow, that might flip back to them to say that we don't necessarily have that kind of service level. And so, we need to outline that in terms of an agreement or some kind of memorandum of understanding or something, so they know that there is some limitations to our capability and our willingness potentially to drop everything and run at somebody's request. So, I think that the whole premise of what you're bringing to us, Ms. Sherlock, around conversation and discussion, to establish some kind of understanding with these organizations about what it is that we are willing to do and for what, I think that's a reasonable expectation. And I would certainly be supportive of that. I think that even the conversation for them to understand how much it is actually costing us to do that is worthwhile having, not to say, well, you know, it's costing us $355.60 an hour to come and mow your cemetery, and the implication is we're going to ask you for that. That's not why we're going there, but it certainly helps them to understand that over the course of the year, it is expensive for us to do that, and there are some costs associated with that. We are willing to continue, but there needs to be a greater recognition of what we're providing. And I think I tend to agree with Counselor Christie. If we're already in Wimbourn and we were to look at their request, if we added two hours to the time that we're there, because we're already there, are we willing to consider doing that? If we went to Swalwell and Swalwell Hall made the same kind of request, we're already in Swalwell, we're going to take another hour while we're there. So, I think if we're going back to those sites independent, I could see us adding a lot of time to our mowing rotation. But I think if we're already there and we're adding two hours here and an hour there, I don't see that as being, you know, in the time estimates that you gave us to mow all the curling or all the halls and spaces, if we didn't include, even if we do include Huxley, we're just talking four and a half hours total time. So, it's not a lot if we're already there, so. And there might be some of them that say, no, we're happy to continue doing it on our But again, I put the note of caution in there. If we start doing a lot of this, all of a sudden, we might find ourselves, and as Counselor Christie said, if we're going to have to run 25 miles to mow for half an hour, that might not be something that we can consider. Counselor Phobes, you had a comment?
Yes. So, if we were to implement this, when would this take effect? Because in my, like any budget, the private cemeteries, those churches also have a budget for the year, so they're not prepared to pay that hourly price. They really are not. I'm also not in favor of giving them an hourly price either. I mean, if we're going to do this, then yes, I do believe the annual fee does need to go up. I just don't think it should be on an hourly base, but that's me, because the people laying in those graves have paid into this county their whole entire lives, and this is our payback to them to say thank you for your service, and our service to you is this.
Any other comments or discussion? Are we moving in a direction that we're going to come to a conclusion, or do we need more time? Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, and I think you've clarified this earlier, Ms. Sherlock, but with, in terms of the private cemeteries, I would love to hear the conversations that come from that. Like, if you say to them, I mean, everybody's aware that the cost of everything is increased, so are you able to bear more cost? Or, you know, would that be possible? And I know where you're, keep saying it's churches. You know, for example, the alumni church doesn't exist. Well, it exists, but it doesn't operate anymore. So, not all of these sites necessarily are tied to a church body, so... So I think just to find out from them if, if they're able to, to have an increase in cost. And, and then I would just like to hear back from them, from that.
Absolutely, yes. And, and to my knowledge, two of the churches exist. Two of the churches have since been dissolved.
As, I would also like you to check to see if the Catholic Church diocese does not have connection to the land.
On the, on the Catholic or on the Alumni?
Oh, well, each one of those churches, I believe their church bodies above their congregation has title to the land. And that's where I'm having an issue with this conversation. We are not talking about our community. We are talking about a governing body way larger than that.
Counselor Cunningham.
I can't speak to the Alumni Cemetery. I would have to check on that. But I know for a fact that the Alumni Church is not Archdiocese land. That is rape pair owned, I believe.
Mr. Hogan, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as, as we go on with discussion, I just want to ensure that as we're, we're embarking on figuring out some of this, the ownership information and making these contacts, the way, pardon me, the way that I'm perceiving the, the council's discussion or the direction we're getting is council is looking at cemeteries. And from what I'm hearing is giving staff the direction that you want to continue county's operations in terms of mowing cemeteries. That would be a service the county would provide. With the caveat, we do need to look at the rate and you're looking at more of an annual fee.
Counselor Fokes.
I do like the hourly fee for the people on the last second that want us to go run out there and do a job for them. I do like the hourly fee for that if they don't give enough notice and if we're not already in the area mowing. We have to charge because we're going from here to there for one specific thing we're not already there.
And so I think that's your, you're talking about a call out fee, basically. So I think that's one thing, you know, we're, for staffs, for administrations perspective right now, I don't know that, we don't need all the details. Because as Mr. Gannon said, we should have a service contract in place with all the entities that we're going to be doing with that. And we could outline that in that contract, what that call out fee would be, even though they were saying overarching annual fee. Today's discussion, I think, around cemeteries gives us a direction of what program we're going to build. If we know that council wants to provide the service, we'll put in an attached policy or whatever. We'll put in the framework, probably a policy. It says, hey, here's a service level we do. Here's what it goes, here's the rough details of it. And then have, we'll need to develop the service contract that we would put in place with each specific entity based on the parameters of that policy. But it just, I just wanted to, to confirm that what I believe we're hearing is administrations that regarding cemeteries, that is a service that the county will offer. Knowing that we still have to build the program as to what that looks like.
Ms. Sherlock.
And because it's built into our master rates as the two hundred dollars per year, that would have to be put into master rates. So those service contracts, those things would likely take us the year to come into effect. So it would be into effect for twenty twenty-five budget for the cemeteries. For the community associations, we could likely put something together for this season, so.
The other thing I, I would add to the conversation is most times when a family is looking at doing a internment service and they're speaking with the local funeral director organizations, they're often given an idea what the fees would be for all of that to occur. And if our specialized call out fee was in a memorandum of understanding with the cemeteries that we're mowing, that could be included as, this will be a cost if you are outside of the regular mowing or as a family, you could take it on yourselves to do, so. So I think that my direction would be, as Mr. Hogan has indicated, is I think we need to have those conversations. We need to indicate that we're looking for a higher fee and that there will be maybe a specialized call out. And we need to have an understanding agreement of some kind with them going forward. Mr. Hogan?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, just one of the clarifications that I want to make with, with councils that before we go too far down the road of, of a call out as an example, that can take a few different forms. So, you know, as, as an example, if we get a call that says, hey, there's a funeral tomorrow. We need you out there today. I think you're going to see us as admin and say, we can't meet that level of service. And so there's, some of that is going to need to be sorted out, right? There have been instances in the past, I think it was last year, where we, we did manage to do that. But there's no guarantee that we can do that. It just, that instance worked out where we could. So when we come back, I think you'd see that there's, that call out fee would be more around minimum notification periods that we would need type of thing as we, as we go in, right? So, but we can build those details as we, as we go, just knowing the direction the council wants us to go based on the committee of the whole discussion today. My second one would be the same type of question that, that it was leading to around cemeteries. What I think I'm hearing committee of the whole talk about around community halls is that we would offer it to some halls based on county operations in the vicinity. And so as we, as we go through there, there is, that's, that's kind of a new twist on, on what we've done. So it is, you know, and I guess that's the, the direction that we need from councils. Are you wanting to provide a service to community halls? If the answer is no, most of the rest of the conversation is moot because we're not doing it. If the answer is yes, then is it anyone that comes to us, which is I don't think what I've been hearing? Or is it if we have county operations within a geographic range that can tie in, then it would be, we may provide this service? In which case you would be saying that, yeah, you've got a handful of halls that you would offer this to and a number of halls that you would say, we're sorry.
Counselor Christie.
I, I agree that there should be some sort of a charge for that. But I think it has to be an annual fee, not an hourly fee. So I'm thinking like if we're doing a four hundred dollar a year fee for cemeteries, it would be the same for them. And I, and it goes back to my comment where if we're going specifically for a hall with huge costs, then no. But when we're right beside the fence, then at four hundred dollars a year, I can see a community center saying, yep, get it done.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. One thing that administration was trying to consider in the background, not that anybody would, would do this. We have the grant program in the back that, that helps those community centers. We're fearful that we're going to be paying ourselves. So we, we want to make sure that we understand that these, these two different service deliveries or support mechanisms for those community halls, we, we need to really understand the comparables between those. And potentially offering one service may affect the other opportunity or vice versa. And, and we just want to present that to council for consideration.
Counselor Cunningham.
I just want to clarify too, my comment about the event last year at Alumni that kind of came, this is, this wasn't a funeral. So obviously, we know that sometimes those can't be pre-planned. So this was an event with a special guest that was doing a dedication. So yeah, more to that point, if there is going to be special events, if people can just let us, give us a good heads up, yeah. I know funerals, that doesn't always happen, so just to clarify that.
Okay, so Ms. Sherlock.
One piece of clarification that I would bring forth just for going towards a, a standard fee is the difference between the size of space for the Torrington Hall versus the Wimborne Hall. And so that was where those, those hourly and those cut rates had come in. Those are very different sized sites and take a very different amount of time. And so that may come back as something being brought forth to us. But it's up to council as to what, what fee you want to charge and where you see the, the, you know, revenue versus the, the community benefit.
I guess in some ways I don't see them as being too much different. Not all cemeteries are created equal either.
No.
And the amount of work to go around headstones and/or open grass areas and so on. So if we have a flat rate fee for a cemetery that takes us two hours and another one that takes us forty-five minutes, I don't see that being too much different when we start to look at community halls. Because in general, they tend to be wide open spaces that they can just mow like crazy. So perhaps that's something that, you know, if we had a fee that we could offer as Counselor Christie had said, you know, it's going to cost you four hundred or five hundred dollars a year for us to do this, they might jump all over it because it might be costing them more than that already. And I know, I could think of what organization would be happy to have you come and mow their grass for five hundred dollars all year long in their cemetery. Counselor Fokes, you had a comment? So I guess I'm, I'm looking at the clock and keeping in mind where we need to be. And I'm also keeping in mind some of the comments made earlier today about this meeting. And so I'm wondering, are we at a point where we're ready to, to solidify the direction to administration? Counselor Fokes.
I also, if we're choosing to go down and give them a flat rate for cutting hall stuff, I also think there needs to be the same, like if it's a last minute and they decide they're Canada Day and their, their grass needs to be cut, they should have to pay for us to roll out there and do that if we're not already out doing the cemetery.
Absolutely.
And that's where it is a fine line.
Between them the same.
Yeah.
Counselor Penner.
So these four community centers that are here are very active community centers. They can, they are currently generating their own income. It's not like a cemetery. That's a two, two completely thing, different things to me here. So we can't do it for nothing. They're already paying, some of them are already paying someone to do their mowing, some are doing it volunteer. So I don't, we don't need to give it to them. They can be charged something because they are active community halls. So it, it won't look right if all of a sudden you get one from Mount Vernon, they want us to start to cut the grass periodically. That, that fee and what we're charging these ones should be relatively close in my books. These halls are generating income and they have some very good, I, I know it's the hub of the community, which is great, and they are being supported. So we, we cannot just do it for four hundred dollars a year. It's almost four hundred dollars a cut in my books. Because some of us are paying that already, some community associations.
Mr. Zir wants to weigh in. Go ahead, please.
Through the chair, and I, I do understand we're nearing the end of the conversation here. I just wanted to bring another aspect into, into the realm here of, of the other side of it, which is snow clearing for these community centers. And, and we do receive requests throughout the year. I don't believe we have any firm contract with them or receive payment from, from a number of these. So if we're having a conversation about mowing, we're prudent to, to look at the, the other side of it with snow clearing as well.
And here I thought you were going to offer free service from transportation.
There you go.
Bring it on. Save Egg Service Board a bunch of money.
So I guess, sorry.
Counselor Penner.
I guess that's something that should come back to us because some of our community centers, we actually have the local guy come in. We know when there's an event, he pushes it, maybe he's not pushing it in the right place, things like that, which may be better that the county does do it. It's for runoff and those kind of things. So that is something that should come back to us if we're going to touch on that. Because like I said, I know in, in the Swallow Hamlet, it's a private guy just comes in and does it for nothing.
Okay, so again, I guess I'm, are we at a point where we're prepared to give that as solid direction to administration? Do you feel you have received enough direction from us as council? Are we still swimming in murky water? Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. Because of wonderful Mr. Zir, he kind of put me in murky water here for a few minutes. If we're going to be exploring the mowing and we're going to be entering into contracts for the mowing portion and council wants and considers snow, it should be part of the same contract. That's just an efficient model. And if we're going to be talking to the community centers at that time, my suggestion is that, that, that council recommend us look at both options and bring that back to council for consideration in a singular type of agreement.
Okay, Counselor Penner.
Thank you. I'd make that motion.
Uh, there it goes. So the committee of the whole is asking administration to investigate, I guess, the mowing and snow removal situations around community centers specific to the Hamlets. Am I correct in that?
Well, should there be something in there for these other ones? We better put out there at a rate. What would be the rate that we could say yes to them? I don't know.
It's quite an increase in service level that we're talking about if we're going to offer to any rural community hall mowing and or snow removal. Mr. Gannon.
Thank you very much. Any additions away from the existing areas that we perform service unfortunately will increase the additional resources required for egg services. And I'm, at this time, I'm uncertain of what that would be. As well, I'm not sure what the impact would be for the transportation area. But on call basis, does create a lot more resources. It's, it's a reactionary type of service versus a programmed delivery service. So when we look at snowfalls and irregularity of snowfalls, Mr. Zir probably can speak better to that, not to throw him under the bus here. But those service delivery models, definitely we can bring them back for consideration. But on the egg side, if we do more than the centers that we're at, we don't have current capacity to perform those services without significant impacts to the schedule and the conditions of our product.
Okay, in light of those comments and in light of the time on the clock, I am going to say we are going to take a break from this conversation and come back after our delegation presentation, which is AUC. So we are going to be in recess for the next twelve minutes. So we'll be back here at nine fifty-nine so that we can be present for the AUC. And that will also give us a little bit of time to just contemplate where we are in this conversation and maybe come back with more firm direction. Okay, so we're in recess. See you at nine fifty-nine. Okay, it is nine fifty-nine. And as promised, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. So the next item in our agenda at ten AM, which is shortly, is a presentation from Alberta Utilities Commission. And I believe we have Richard Goldberg with us and Kim McNabb. So welcome. And before you get started, I'm going to have council introduce themselves to you. And I'm going to start with our council member Deputy Reeve, who's also on video conference. And so if you would go ahead, please.
Morning, people. Glad to have you and looking forward to learning some stuff. Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Good morning, Debbie Penna, Division Two.
Good morning, Fay McGee, Division One.
Good morning, Carrie Phobes, Division Four.
And good morning, I'm Ken King, Division Seven.
Good morning. Thank you for being here, not only for us, but for our rate peers as well. Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division Five.
Good morning, I'm Wade Christie, I'm Division Six, so I'm the northwest part of the county.
And I guess we have a number of our senior leadership team is here in the room with us as well. So Mr. Gannon, if you would, please introduce yourself and then.
Thank you, Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services.
Good morning, Mike Zier, Director of Infrastructure.
Good morning, Teresa Cochran, Director of Corporate Services.
Right on cue, our CAO.
Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
And then I'm Carolyn Van der Kool, Legislative Services Coordinator. Thank you for coming.
So Richard and Kim, welcome. We're very happy that you have agreed to join with us today and we're looking very much forward to the conversation. And I'll get you to introduce yourselves and kind of what your roles are. And then I'll let you do your presentation.
Certainly. Thank you very much, council, for having us today. I'm particularly jealous. Jerry is somewhere much warmer than where we are right now. Lots of updates, as you know, lately in the utilities and regulatory sphere. So we're happy to be here and to discuss with you some of the changes and the general overview of all of the updates that have been going on lately. So my name is Richard Goldberg. I'm an advisor here at the AUC with our External Affairs and Communications Group. And I'm joined by Kim McNabb, who is the Executive Director of Facilities at the AUC. Brief slide deck. I'm not sure if the information was shared, but we're going to present a few slides and leave some room for questions. But of course, if there are any throughout, feel free to just shout out and we can, we can get to them or feel free to save them to the end as well.
Okay, thank you for that. And like I said, when you're ready, you can go forward with your presentation.
We're ready to go.
Okay, have at her.
So just wanted to start with offering some a brief overview of the AUC and our mandate. We are the province's public utilities regulator. Our mandate is to make decisions on utility applications that are in the public interest. And public interest can be viewed a little differently between applications. In some instances, there may be considerations for environment or social or economic. And depending on the nature of those applications, each of them may have their own unique issues or considerations that the commission weighs differently and reviews in each of its application review. And in doing so, tries to balance each of these components in making their decisions. And so tying that into the slide, we hold public evidence-based review processes to review these applications and determine if projects and applications are in the public interest. And this is ensuring the uppers receive safe and reliable service at just and reasonable rates. The AUC regulates investor-owned natural gas, electricity, water utilities, and certain municipally-owned electric utilities. So for electricity and gas, this would include the regulation of transmission, distribution, generation and power plants. And also includes the facility development rate setting for transmission and development. And one key element of the AUC that isn't specifically listed on this is our compliance and enforcement function. So we have a division of staff dedicated to ensuring that regulated utilities comply with our decisions and our orders and with the relevant Alberta legislation and regulations. So this also includes oversight of the electricity and natural gas wholesale markets. So the AUC, we're broken into two groups or structures, one being the commission, which is comprised of up to nine members, who are the decision makers on all of our applications and are appointed staff by the government of Alberta. And then the other half of the organization is the AUC staff members, which is members like Kim and I, who are, who work in supporting the commission on applications and on the day-to-day operations. This includes staff in various groups, including facilities, rates, external affairs. We have a legal team, our market oversight enforcement, as well as rates. So Kim and I, we are not decision makers, but Kim specifically, her team works on the facility applications that come through, develop those applications and work with the commission as they work on their decisions. So that's a little overview of the AUC, but moving on to some of the information, which I'm sure will be a little bit more of interest to you and the council, are some of the updates from the recent inquiry and the Alberta government's policy announcements. So in August, the AUC was tasked by the government to hold an inquiry to gather information on a number of matters that were separated into two modules of our inquiry. Module A, looking specifically at a number of issues related to land use, as well as municipalities. And B, looking at how mix of generation could impact the electric grid and future planning. So Module A, that report was made public last month or late February. Module B has been submitted to government, but it has not yet been made public. So some of the information that was coming from the inquiry that you see on screen is from our Module A, as well as a number of policies that came from the Alberta government introduced last month. Also included in the report were a number of commitments that the AUC is taking on and that we will speak to a little bit more specifically afterwards. But at first, I just wanted to kind of go over some of these updates that came from the government of Alberta's announcement last month. So the government, as well as the AUC, made a number of commitments. The first being that municipalities will now be automatically given a right to participate in AUC hearings and are now eligible for cost recovery for participation in those hearings. As also directed, the AUC is going to be doing a review of our Rule Seven as it relates to a number of specific topics, but one that includes municipal submission requirements. This consultation is slated to kick off in the next couple of weeks and will outline a number of the topics that are going to be covered in this, as well as how to participate. And we're at this stage encouraging any and no municipalities to participate in this consultation once we kick that off. And Kim will be speaking a little bit further on some of these shortly, but just wanted to highlight this is we've heard from a number of municipalities that were seeking for a little bit more involvement in our, or in our review and hearing opportunities. So there'll be a little bit more information on that. Looking at reclamation, the Alberta government outlined how their desire for developers to be responsible for reclamation costs via bonus security. Reclamation will either be provided directly to the government or it may be negotiated with the landowners. And while this isn't a formal policy or legislation, the AUC is reviewing applications with this direction in mind and ensuring that reclamation considerations are included in our application review on each application case by case. So looking at agricultural lands, the GOA is taking a new agriculture-first lens and will not be permitting renewable generation developments on Class One and Two lands unless proponents can demonstrate ability for this to happen. And some examples that we're seeing and hearing about are Agribaltex, for example, but we recognize that the rules around this are still a little bit unclear and are looking, again, at each application on case by case. We're hoping the AUC will be.
Excuse me for a second. We have a question. So go ahead, Councilor Phobes.
My question is on the Class One and Class Two. It had come to my attention not too long ago that the federal government doesn't consider Class One for land soil classifications anymore. Is this correct?
I believe so. I'm going to look to Kim to verify that for me.
I couldn't tell you what the federal government has concluded without double checking. But my understanding, our internal understanding is that in Alberta, we're talking about Class Two. I hope that helps.
So, just for clarification, under the classification system that is now being used in Alberta, it's generally speaking, it's Class Two ag land and lands below that. There is none designated Class One under the system that's being used, correct?
That's my understanding, that's the A U C's understanding, that there's no possible.
Thank you for that clarification. Richard, I think you're free to go ahead then.
Thank you, and of course, if there are other questions, feel free to interrupt me, I'm, I'm hopefully not going too quickly. Moving over to viewscapes, which I'm sure there's been a strong interest in, we've been getting lots of questions around buffer zones and setbacks of projects, specifically to the Alberta government's map that was shared last month and how that may impact projects in the future. So, part of the A U C's commitments will be updating our existing visual impact assessment requirements within Rule Seven to include more structured methodology within our application review process. So, while there aren't formal policy or legislation requirements around viewscapes, the A U C will be reviewing and is reviewing facility applications with this government direction in mind and to get a broader understanding of what's around these projects and how to consider visual impacts on a specific case by cases. So, most of you have probably seen the government's map that was shared. That includes buffer zones of minimum thirty-five kilometer setbacks around protected areas and other pristine viewscapes designated by the province. The A U C is considering this map in, in reviewing its applications. But that being said, the Alberta government is still continuing to review this map and determine if any other changes are going to be made. And so, we are working under this guidance currently and will be going forward. And our, the last point was specific to Crown lands, which the G O A has shared some general support for exploring. But any development of renewable projects or power plants on Crown lands will still be on a case-by-case basis in the future. I'll just pause if there's any more questions before I pass it over to, to Kim.
Yeah, just a question from Counselor Cunningham.
So, I'm just wondering what would be the definition of pristine viewscapes? Because I think that would be very different depending on who you're talking to. I know many people in our area have some pretty amazing properties with some of the best views in Alberta, in our opinion. So, I just wonder if you could clarify how they're going to define what a pristine viewscape is.
Yes, thank you, that, that's been an ongoing question for a while. In our Module A report, the findings that we heard from many different stakeholders is that it is hard to define a pristine viewscape and that it is a bit of a subjective term, depending on where you are, what you're seeing. And so, the A U C will be kind of looking at these projects on a case-by-case basis, but there hasn't been any sort of a formal clarification on what a pristine viewscape is per se. Kim, do you have any comments or thoughts on, on this as well?
Just really reiterating what you've said, that in terms of a formal definition, we're working off of the same public announcements that you have, which is the February twenty-eighth letter from the Minister to the A U C and the draft map that was circulated and the cover letter on that. If you don't have a copy, we're happy to send it along. And that the A U C has always been able to consider these impacts of projects before it. So, it will continue to take into account the surrounding landscape on a case-by-case basis until or unless and then until something of formal comes up.
Was there a follow-up to that question? No, okay. All right. Thank you, and I guess, Richard, you were passing the baton to Kim at this point. So, Kim, if you wish, go ahead.
Thanks. So, as, as Richard mentioned on the last slide, the new standard procedure for municipalities in the A U C's process is that municipalities can automatically have full participation in any A U C proceedings that they want to come into. If that project is proposed within municipality, the process looks very similar to before, but participation is automatic and the A U C is going to be looking at its cost recovery regime. And municipalities are eligible now to claim those costs and go through the same cost recovery process that some landowners would have in the past. And the key piece of this is that the A U C very much recognizes that municipalities have some unique expertise in land use planning, which is their jurisdictions. And increased municipal participation in our processes will promote enhanced consideration of municipal views on land use on impacts of projects. So, that, that information from municipalities is very valuable to the officials who want to decide. And so, and again, Richard referenced this, we're going to be kicking off a review in the next couple of weeks. Rule Seven is our massive facilities rule that covers all of the various requirements that applicants come to provide in their applications before us. And we're going to look at a set of interim information requirements that's currently being asked for any power plant owners. And we're going to be looking at how to standardize or further enhance municipal participation in their proceedings, including some sort of municipal land use planning checklist or a letter from municipalities, whether that can be a mandatory information requirement, whether that's municipal. And we're gonna be looking at participant involvement program guidelines, so that's what we call it, to ensure that proponents' obligations to notify and consult with municipalities are clear. And that our hope is that ideally, proponents are encouraged to and do go out and consult early and thoroughly with municipalities so that by the time they come to us, there's more likely for an application to maybe help standard concerns the municipalities to make those before that application is even finalized and brought to us. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, we very much encourage, we appreciate municipal participation in our proceedings. It's very, very helpful to understand what a particular county or other municipality wants to do within their territory as it relates to land use planning. And we consider that it's very helpful to identify risks of projects. It's very helpful to understand if there are any mitigations that proponents can apply to their project design upfront to address concerns of landowners or municipalities. And generally speaking, our role in approving these applications focuses on whether or not these projects have complied with provincial laws, they comply with our rules, they're in the public interest, and they comply with applicable municipal requirements where that's feasible. And the idea is, the more consultation you have, the more well-funded project is. By the time it comes to us, the more it's addressed municipal concerns. And I think that's my last slide, I think the next one's a thank you for listening to us. So, I'll say, thank you very much, we appreciate having a chance to talk with the council, the senior leadership. And there's a general email up on the screen there, but as Richard mentioned, I am the head of the Facilities Division, so we're, we're tasked with all of these power plant applications. So, you can consider me a specific point of contact for any questions and we'll also open up to questions now.
Okay, thank you, Kim and Richard. So, my question to council, of course, is, are there questions or clarification that we would like to have while we have Richard and Kim with us? So, is there anyone, Counselor Phobes?
I guess one of my first questions would be is, is what is the ongoing projects at the A U C that study the long-term effects of these renewable projects on the public, animal, and human soil-water that you guys are doing? Because one of the concerns I have had from the people that live in my division, where there is a huge project coming up at, is, is the shadow flickering. Now, we know in nineteen ninety-three that the, the first wind turbines went down by Pincher Creek. What have you learned from the data that those have presented to you?
So, I'm trying to think of a concise way to put this. Because we've had an unbelievable amount of shadow flicker information put across in various proceedings over the course of multiple years. We have, I, I think the place that you can find the A U C's decision on shadow flicker and whether or not we affect people or what the current science is on it are in a bunch of our recent wind farm decisions, which we can provide. Generally speaking, I'm not aware of any decisions where we found that current science suggests long-term positive impacts on shadow flicker, if that's your specific question. But we could also provide further resources, we could provide those decisions through the gap and through the shadow flicker effects of a particular project. I think a lot of it depends upon the characteristics of that project and there's a lot of mitigations that can be done, specifically like fighting wind turbines and the references. So, a lot of it would depend on the specific project if it's happening. I'm not sure if that's helpful or if we'd like to follow up that much further.
So, Kim, I'm just gonna try to get some clarification. So, in the studies that have been done on existing projects related to shadow flicker and residential setbacks, has there been any further clarification or expansion of setbacks due to shadow flicker and impact on either residential or farm operations in proximity to those towers? Sorry, it's Ken, Ken King is...
So, we don't have standard mandatory setbacks related to shadow flicker. How far away or in what position residents is community compared to individual turbines would always be excited on a case-by-case basis, that is.
Okay, so, there is nothing within the guidelines for a power company coming forward with a project that would specify how they would address the shadow flicker and setback from residential difference, residence? So, there's no standard requirement in?
There's no mandatory standard for... They would have to come in and look for us and... But in that particular case, that the shadow flicker impacts are... It would be very case-by-case.
Okay, so, this is Ken again, just to follow up. So, if we have a project being proposed, which we do, and we have residents that are very concerned about things like shadow flicker and the impacts on their potential lifestyle and life, how do they bring forward those concerns in a way that's constructive for A U C to consider?
We would encourage them to participate in our process once an application is filed. But even before that, the proponents of that project should be consulting with potentially affected people. So, making their concerns known to the specific project opponent right upfront is also very helpful. Sometimes designs can change, hopefully you can get to the application state, but it depends on the opponent. And then, if no design changes are made and/or the concerns haven't otherwise been addressed, then the best way to kind of show the A U C those concerns is to come in to our process. So, the application will get filed, notice that application would go out to everyone in the area who might be affected by the project and then they have an opportunity to file a statement that they're entitled to participate. And they can come in and seek their piece or provide written submissions, depending on what they're looking to do. And we can, we have a lot of resources to help involve through that initial stage of figuring out how to do that.
Okay, just again, I, this is Ken again, and I'm looking for clarification again. So, I'm not saying that all of these companies are created equal or that they all take public concerns in the same way. So, if a resident of Neheal County has attempted to express concerns related to things like shadow flicker and really feel that those concerns have been ignored or not taken into account in a proponent's application, you are saying that you really would encourage those individuals to register as a participant and indicate that they have raised those concerns and that they have not been addressed?
Yes, yes, that's, that's the forum. If they haven't had a chance to, if they haven't resolved anything, the proponent hasn't addressed those concerns. It's very helpful to...
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Phobes, you had an additional question?
I do. Does the A U C set standards for the information that these companies can share, whether they're at the kitchen table with our residents or in a public forum of an open house? I have attended one where not all of the information being presented is actually factual. So, where is the A U C's responsibility in the information that they're giving out to us as the person or the people that would be affected by the decisions you are gonna make?
So, going back to our Rule Seven, Rule Seven sets out requirements for what we call K I P, what Participated Involvement Program. And as the A U C, our expectation is that the information presented by project opponents, the landowners, and councils is factual. The con- the, the concept of those requirements in Rule Seven is that we want to ensure that all of the relevant information has been shared. And once an application comes before us, we have to assess, or the commissioners have to assess, whether or not a proponent's information, participation involvement program was adequate as part of our overall public assessment. So, if something like that were to happen and a landowner came into our process, they were really concerned with what had gotten shared through that process, that's something that's a very valid piece of information for them to share with us and we would take that into account.
Okay, thank you for that, Kim. Question from Counselor Cunningham.
So, just further to that question, Kim, now, I, I could be wrong on this, but my understanding in the oil and gas industry is people that visit homes have to be land agents. And if I'm correct, when these folks are visiting potential adjacents or perhaps even people interested in the projects, they do not have to be land agents. They are, in essence, sales-type people. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And if I'm not, will there be any changes in these new module findings to correct that and have people have to be regulated land agents when they are going to homes?
So, a couple of different things, I'm realizing that the crux of your last question is different than what I was addressing. So, a few things, land agents, you're absolutely right. There are no requirements that the people going to make deals for the single land at the outset of the project are land agents. The oil and gas regime, like my understanding of why that regime is on the front of the case is that at the end of the day, you can't say no to an oil and gas facility. Whereas, if you don't want to hold private infrastructure under the end, you have the right to refuse it. So, to date, all those kind of requirements or protections or like the land agent requirements have not applied to our plans. I'm not aware of any current plans to change that. And, but my word on that is not the best information because the, like the requirements for making... My word on that is not the best information because the like the requirements for making contacts with project components is outside the AUC's jurisdiction. We wouldn't be able to require. Representatives from project components to meet land agents, that would be something the government of Alberta would have to decide. So we we haven't had any indication that there is planning on changing that regime, but I wouldn't know necessarily if they had that.
Yeah, follow up from councillor Cunningham?
So and and this might totally be a question for the Alberta government, but from what we're hearing. A lot of times these contracts have been signed like a decade ago. And projects change, people change, people pass away, but yet these families are still tied to those contracts. So I think there is a lot of questions to be answered around that, so is that a question that we should be posing to the government of Alberta as opposed to you folks?
I think that that would be the most effective post of the government of Alberta. We have had. I I think I can only think of one proceeding in the past where someone's raised a really significant concern with how their contract is done in our process. Typically, that's not something that we're going to see. But if there was some sort of. Something had gone very awry in form of the recent. I think our.
Okay. Are there other questions that councillor Christie?
I'm just thinking about the reclamation bond or security. For me, I can't figure out what something that I do today, five years from now, what that's going to cost. My concern is on these big facilities, why are they not? Or why shouldn't, why should they work on a lease agreement, not purchase that land? Because the land value is something that's secure no matter who owns it. And at the end of the day, it's going to appreciate probably as much as as costs will do. But the security of that land would be in that company, if the company changes, this land is still there.
It's it's a valid concern. I don't know that we can. Answer that. Particularly well because the leasing versus purchasing the land is is outside of our jurisdiction. We're we're only responsible for the project approval, kind of similar to. Well, really similar to the development permitting process that it doesn't involve consideration of how that land was obtained for the project. So I I'm not sure that's helpful to you, but that's where where our position is on that.
You have follow up?
Yeah, I would have a follow up, I I still go back to the bond or security. That may be far short of what we need forty years from now. But if the land is tied to that development, I don't care if it's renewable energy or what it is. At the end of the day, they're responsible for their land and it can track from company to company. My concern down the road is similar to our oil industry where companies sell off their assets that are valuable. Withhold the stuff that's not valuable till there's nothing left and then as ratepayers and as. As taxpayers of the province, we're caught with the Orphan Well Association basically, and there's nothing for for the for renewable energy.
So I guess what I what I can say about. What what role we play in reclamation security is. Really reiterating what the current developments are, so there's a couple of key pieces on that. The minister's February twenty eighth letter. Set out what their intention is, what the government of Alberta's intention is for reclamation security for these projects and it's it's kind of a two pronged approach. In that letter, as far as I can tell, which is that Alberta Environment and Protected Areas is currently developing a regime to make. Security of some kind mandatory for project proponents or. Project proponents can negotiate with landowners to create some sort of lease agreement that includes provision for security. And the sufficiency of that can then come before the AUC. So we're not generally involved in assessing these lease agreements and we can't. We can't act as landowner's lawyer, like we can't make sure that the agreement as a whole is. Fine in some way, but we do have a limited scope to assess whether or not the project is in the public interest. By assessing whether or not they've provided for adequate security in their specific contracts. I think in a perfect world, we'd be talking about a uniform mandatory. Security regime by Alberta Environment and Parks, but we don't know what that looks like and we're waiting for further policy direction.
Okay, this is Ken again, and I'm just going to seek a little bit more clarification, so. Currently, the responsibility for security on these projects, as far as reclamation is concerned, is either going to be. Based on a landowner's negotiation with the company. Or it is going to be dependent on a framework that Alberta Environment is currently developing. Correct?
That's correct.
So at this point in time, since Alberta Environment does not have a framework. For the projects that come forward to AUC that don't have a security component that's been negotiated with the landowner. What is the stand that AUC is taking towards those projects that appear not to have any security as far as reclamation is concerned?
That would have to be decided on a case by case, depending on what the proponent brings forward. Right now, based on kind of my overall view of the various applications before us is everyone has some sort of. Promise to create some sort of security. It's it it really varies proponent by proponent, so I don't know that I could give you a uniform answer. And also that the trying to figure out what form of security is the best form of security. Is fairly complicated as well, so it would really depend on the specific program that that project is is proposing. But in terms of, you had mentioned earlier, kind of what what types of concerns are are valid for landowners to bring up to us. Something like the reclamation security piece is is well within what we'd consider as our overall assessment.
Okay, just before I go to councillor Penner, I'm just going to follow up again, so what you're saying is that. Currently, if a project comes to AUC and there's nothing negotiated with the landowner and because Alberta. Environment has yet to develop their framework. Really what AUC is looking at is the security promise that the company or proponent is put into their proposal. And so none of those are being necessarily held up because they're waiting on Alberta Environment and whatever framework they're going to put in place, so. Currently, if a if a proponent comes to AUC, they have nothing negotiated with the landowner. And because there is no Alberta Environment framework, it's just based off of whatever that proponent is saying they will do. X number of years in the future.
That's right with the. One added statement that I would flag from that letter to the AUC from the minister, which is. Under reclamation security, the government stated that. The AEP A regime would apply to all projects approved after March first. So in this middle ground, those projects should be subject to whatever. A P A regime comes out as well, they like the. The February twenty eighth letter basically flagged to project proponents that they're going to be subject to whatever regime comes into play. I I wish I had perfect clarity on what that looks like in every case, but it really depends. And that's not a satisfying answer, but it's the best one I've got at this point.
Okay, so it has been stated that the Alberta Environment and Protected Areas. Framework will be retroactively applied to any project approved after March first. That's in the minister's letter, correct?
That's in the minister's letter. But the minister's letter also says that private agreements with landowners may be sufficient. So there is some lack of clarity there at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Penner has a question.
I just say wow when I hear that word, promise scares me as a municipality. I can't believe that it all wasn't put together before it was released because this scares me as a municipality because. The landowner could walk from the project if it does collapse and then it's eventually handed back to the county. So I'm, it's just wow to me that this is not in place right now to do with the reclamation and the bond and securities. We've seen it with oil and gas and so it's it's really scares me when I hear that word, promise.
We. We can only do what we we have from. With with what's been announced so far. If for what it's worth, if there are currently municipal requirements for reclamation security that also. Can be taken into account as the AUC's process. So it it right now, it does come down to a case by case, it doesn't mean that the AUC will accept a mere promise. But it might, depending on circumstances of the project, sometimes how big the project is matters. There there's lots of different factors and again, I have to go back to that case by case, so in this in this kind of interim period. It really depends on the characteristics of the particular project and what they've proposed.
Deputy Reeve Whitstock?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, just to change the subject a little bit, going back to the agricultural lands. No longer permitted on one and two, well, we don't have one, so the so we we can't put it on class two lands. In the old regulations, it had to be cultivated lands. Has that changed? Are we now able to use native grass? As a base for some of these developments or is that just? I guess that's the end of my question, just wondering if native grass is now going to be considered?
Um, the current rules or the old rules haven't changed in relation to native grassland as a result of the class two. The new class two policy, so the native grassland rules come from Alberta Environment and Park. In Alberta Environment and Protected Areas, used to be Alberta Environment and Parks, guidelines and directives. So they're a valid factor to take into consideration when the AUC is deciding whether to cite projects. And some projects on native grassland have been denied, there was one that came out recently. A decision that came out recently that was denied because it was cited entirely on native grasslands, so it does factor in. And those the existing policies on that haven't changed.
Okay, so I guess councillor Cunningham with a follow up?
Just on the same agriculture component, I know in your slide deck here, it says. If the proponent can demonstrate ability for both crops and our livestock to coexist with a project, so I'm just wondering. If you could break that down a little bit or kind of define it a bit more, what that definition or how the proponent would meet that criteria? So I guess, for example, if a proponent put ten sheep on a solar project, is that? Is that going to satisfy that criteria or like two beehives, I just wondering what? Well, how that's going to be looked at or how that will be determined?
I can jump in first on this one, Kim, and maybe you can follow up for me, but we we've been hearing a lot of those very similar questions specific about. Like to what extent do agro voltaics or. Cohabitation of livestock and renewables, like what does that actually look like and? I think once again, we we have to reiterate that it is kind of still case by case because we're in this. Policy gray area where the government hasn't given that clear direction. Exactly what qualifies for this coexistence. I I know that we are still considering each one individually, but. To, I don't know if we have a perfect answer for you today. But I know we've we've been getting a lot of questions about that exactly, like beehives and like how many sheep, for example, would you need? On any piece of land to qualify? Kim, do you have anything to add to that? I I it's a little ambiguous right now, but I I feel like we're just leaning on this, it's case by case.
I can't give any more standard requirements. As Richard says, it's it's from the public announcements that you have as well. That we're that we have to use to take our guidance and it's not clear what an agricultural takes program requires, so we have to assess individually right now.
So I really appreciate your answers and I appreciate your limitations and I guess this would be more of a question for the government, I'm I'm confused why they would. Lift the moratorium and and have projects go forward without having a clear defined path of where they're going, so. But again, that'll be a question for for Minister Newdorff perhaps rather than yourself, so thank you.
And if it, you know, I I think you're absolutely right, it it has to be directed to the government as a general statement, but if you have concerns about specific projects. We really, really encourage. You, any municipality to come in to our process and if. Something if there's something specific on a project where you're concerned with their agricultural program or anything else like that, we want to hear from you, so.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Fobes?
I guess my question is in regards to the equipment that is being erected on these facilities. We know that the majority of the equipment is coming from countries that don't participate in the carbon tax that we all are currently in. So what is the responsibility of the AUC to ensure that the equipment being constructed in our country and our province? It meets the standards of what you're considering to be green energy because currently the equipment is not green energy when it comes from China.
Neither of you want to tackle that one?
It's a really good question, we we don't have any specific requirements that I'm fully aware of. In terms of the production of these facilities, we we regulate these genera generation. To ensure that the development of these facilities is done in a manner that was applied for. But as far as the components of those individual facilities, that I don't think we really have anything we can speak to specifically. Kim, any any thoughts?
Putting on my old hat, I was a lawyer before I was the executive director of facilities, so this is a very lawyer answer. Jurisdictionally, I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that absent. Quite clear direction from the Alberta government, so I I think part of why we weren't sure how to answer is. We're we're feeling bad about consistently saying, go ask the government of Alberta instead of us. I know we keep, we're sounding like a broken record on that one, but some certain things are outside our control and I think this is one of them.
So this is Ken and I'll just follow up a little bit there, I think that. I'm not even going to put this so much on the Alberta government as I am going to put it on the federal government of Canada, which has. Stated over and over that they have a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to create these green energy projects. But they are not restricting. Where these companies can source their materials and they're not looking at sort of the impacts that manufacturing countries like China are having. On the environment and greenhouse gas production, so in some ways it's double speak that they're doing. They're encouraging these developments and they're putting large money and subsidies into them, but they're not mandating sourcing and so. I get where you're coming from and I certainly get where the Alberta government's coming from. The failure here in my mind is a federal government failure and. It's one that we have a hard, hard time having much impact on and so I I under totally understand where you're coming from. When you say I'm not sure how we want to answer that one, so. So I appreciate that. Councillor Fobes has another question, go ahead.
Mine's going to come to public interest. I've had residents that have moved from Ontario to our actual county because the windmills in that province harm their health. They're now here, you speak often to the public interest of what's best for everyone. Does the AUC consider that my residents living in Neheal County are in our public interest? Because if they don't live here, we don't have the funds in which to run this county or provide anything on a service. or provide anything on a service level to the residents that do live here. So there's a huge, in my opinion, misconception on what the greater public interest is over to the public interest of the people that live within my community.
The, when the commission has, is tasked with considering a specific project, that public interest assessment absolutely can take into account concerns from the county like you've just described, if there are particular people within a, a project area that, that have that type of concern, or that's their history of how they've, they've ended up there. That's something that they can bring forward as part of our process.
So again, either that's a municipal, probably more individual participation in the, in the hearing specific to a project that residents really need to be coming and participating in that process to outline those concerns and their specific health concerns related to the project that's being specified.
If there, the, the concerns you're describing, if it's individual concerns on health, then yes, that we'd be looking for them to, to come tell us about it.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? Counselor Cunningham.
Okay, I think these will be ones that you'll be able to answer for us. So just wondering, is the AUC going to use a criteria from Green Cat Enterprises regarding the valued viewscapes? And what will the criteria be for the AUC to determine, determine an onsite visit to the site?
Both of those topics, we can answer that, kind of. Both of those topics are in our upcoming Rule Seven consultation that we're gonna kick off in two weeks. The plan for, will, will have both of those topics kind of up front and center as items that we'd like to hear input on. So we won't be deciding on specific criteria until we've heard more from people, consultants, counties. If you are interested in having input into what the end result of that is, we highly encourage you to participate in the Rule Seven consultation.
So that's all well and good. And again, this is Ken, just following up on a previous question asked. What happens to the applications that are currently in process? Well, these rules necessarily haven't been developed. So again, consideration of viewscapes and onsite evaluation of those kind of things. In the meantime, while the consultation is taking place, how do residents with concerns impact applications that are currently going forward in front of AUC?
I'm gonna end up send, sounding like a broken record, but it has to be case by case in the interim period. If there was a particular valued viewscape or pristine viewscape, however you want to define it, if there was a particular feature that was of great concern near a proposed development, that would be something we'd want to hear from either landowners or a county in our process. And we can take that into account. Before this policy on viewscapes came out, we have considered visual impacts of projects in the past, and we would consent, continue to do that.
Okay, just as a follow up and a comment before I turn it over to Counselor Phobes. In our presentation to AUC, when you were doing your hearing during the moratorium, one of the things that I stated to a question that I was asked about viewscapes and the value of those viewscapes is, why is the viewscape in Neale County worth anything less than the viewscape west of Calgary? And so I think that viewscape and the value of viewscape is very, very dependent on individual and where we actually live. And even though we might not see the mountains daily as a part of our everyday life, our viewscape and what we consider to be pristine viewscapes are of great value. And so it is problematic for us when it seems to be disregarded or not accepted as having great value when somebody else's viewscape is considered that way. And I know that part of that has been decided by the provincial government. But I do want to state that our residents and the viewscapes that we have are considered extremely important and is of great value to us as much as anyone else's viewscape might be in consideration of these projects. So just wanted to toss that in there. And I'm not really expecting a response, it's more of a comment. I'll let Counselor Phobes move forward.
I'd also like to make the comment that Neale County was named after the knee hills of Neale County. So that is our pristine viewscape where we live. And so to allow that to not be considered as part of your viewscapes is, does a detriment to the people that live within this county.
I will clarify on that point then. Whether, you know, this map is in development, we might get more guidance on that specifically. But we do still consider and have in the past considered visual impacts regardless of where projects are. So I, I would be, I would not take the existence of that map with the buffer zone in the foothills of the Rockies to be an indication that the AUC will suddenly not consider visual impacts elsewhere. That's why that case by case assessment is, is what we keep coming back to, is that every project's different and it's in a different place. So a project proposed in Neale County would be able to take into account concerns from landowners in the county about the visual impacts that are specific to Neale, regardless of whether or not that map exists or is put into policy. So you can do that now in this interim period. That's something we would have considered in the past, and it's something we will continue to consider. I, I hope that's helpful.
Okay, again, this is Ken, and I'm sorry to keep coming back to you. But I have a question regarding adjacent landowners and setbacks of development. One of the concerns that we have is trying to determine within our municipal development plan in our land use bylaws is what is considered to be reasonable as a setback from the point of view of AUC? And what is reasonable to be considered as a setback from the point of view of our residents? And I think that those two things are very, very different in the magnitude and the size of that setback. And so I'm just, I'd be very interested in hearing from either of you in terms of what AUC sees as a reasonable setback, not only to a property line, but also to an adjacent resident or farm that is not participating in a specific project. And specifically related to wind, I think I'm more interested specifically related to wind, especially in light of the size and the magnitude of the towers that are currently being constructed.
So I've got, I guess, two different answers. One is, we don't currently have mandatory minimum distances prescribed in Rule Seven or elsewhere. But we're looking into that as part of the upcoming Rule Seven consultation. And we'll see what comes of that, what we hear from people. The second piece of that is, we do have what I call de facto mandatory minimum distances from wind turbines because we have a noise rule, Rule Twelve, that specifies how loud nearby infrastructure is allowed to be at residences. So proponents have to come in and give us evidence that they're gonna meet the minimum noise requirements. And you won't be able to meet the minimum noise requirements if you're fifty meters away from a residence. That's dramatic, but you have to be a minimum distance away essentially to meet Rule Twelve. That doesn't provide a minimum geographic number of meters right now. But that's what we're looking at in the upcoming Rule Seven, is whether or not we need to specify some sort of mandatory distance.
So currently, it's based on decibel ratings at a specific residence or point away from the development?
Yes.
Counselor Phobes?
So you, the AUC considers the noise. How come shadow flickering isn't considered by the AUC? Because it is something that has been brought to the attention of you as well as most municipalities that have these developments coming.
We can and do consider shadow flicker when it's raised as a concern. We just don't have a mandatory minimum distance in relation to it at that point. So if there's us, if there's a concern about it, that would be something that we'd be looking at in the upcoming Rule Seven. Or otherwise, what we've done in the past is assess it on a case by case basis. And if there's a concern raised or wind turbines are particularly close to residences, we have had shadow flicker assessments put in front of us in the past and assessed it as part of that decision on a case by case basis.
Counselor Christie.
I guess one of my concerns on your setback, is there any consideration for ice shedding in the wintertime? I'm a contractor that plows snow. If I can see ice on those blades around the freezing point, they don't allow me onsite or anywhere close to it. Why is that not considered?
It's, it's another aspect of these projects that has been considered in the past on a case by case basis. And is a valid thing to raise, but we haven't created minimum mandatory distances surrounding it as of yet.
Follow up, Counselor Christie?
I know that the company that I work for has their own mandatory setbacks for contractors.
Okay, follow up, Counselor Phobes?
Is also in regards to the safety aspect, does someone have to die for you to make it a mandatory part of your regiment of what these companies should be following? Because he, he does this as a contract, so he's telling you this does exist. What is the responsibility of the AUC to make sure that this is mandated so that it doesn't kill somebody in the future?
Oh, Richard, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I, I appreciate, these are, these are hard questions for us to answer in this moment, but we appreciate the concerns of yourselves and of your citizens. As Kim alluded to, like, these, these really are situational case by case. And by applying rules and like peanut butter spreading certain requirements, it's something that the AUC hasn't considered yet. But again, we are still very much in a policy flux of looking for updates from the government. But through Rule Seven consultation, hopefully receiving more of this feedback so that the commission can and will consider some new direction perhaps going forward on how to address these concerns. So it, it, I'm sure it's not the answer you're, you're looking for today. But we really are trying to consider as much feedback from municipalities. And we're hoping that this Rule Seven consultation will direct us to new issues that we haven't necessarily considered thoroughly yet.
Counselor Penner, did you have a follow up?
Just to follow up on the ice, I look forward to what comes out of the Rule Seven. This is a serious concern. I also have land in special areas and the provincial highway was closed down for numerous hours because there was ice on the blades and until it was released off the blades, that highway was kept closed and we were detoured onto gravel. So this is a major concern and it should be dealt with. Well, hopefully, it will come up in the, the Rule Seven review.
Okay. Counselor Cunningham?
So I heard you mention, I know sometimes these questions are hard to answer. Anything that you can get back to us on, we sure appreciate that if you don't have it in the moment, where we're always willing to take information. So I do really want to say, I, I appreciate that Module One takeaway, giving municipalities the automatic rate to participate. We're often told that municipal government is the government closest to the people. So we really appreciate that ability to be able to speak on behalf of who we represent. One, a lot of the people in the area don't, never knew anything about the AUC until perhaps a project comes to their backyard. So one question that came to me from a resident was commission members on the AUC. Is there any rural residents on that commission and do any of them have agriculture backgrounds?
So our, our commission is comprised of various backgrounds. I can't say specifically if they're of a municipal or rural background. But our commission is comprised of a number of members with various experiences as lawyers, economists, engineers. So they have the experience professionally to assess different types of concerns and circumstances of each application. And they do try to weigh and consider the various perspectives such as municipalities and rural residents in reviewing these decisions. That is part of our public interest mandate is to kind of consider the, the various components of these and implications of these projects. It's not necessarily just if this project is going to be the most economical or if it has the least amount of impact on the environment. And our commission is comprised of members who bring that perspective to decision making. But as, as far as I'm aware of at this moment, I don't believe anybody on our commission is rural based. Most of them are Calgary and Edmonton based currently.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions for either Richard or Kim from council members? Any further clarification, anyone seeking? Question for either you, Richard or Kim. There's just a question about Module B. Do you have any idea of the timing when we might see that at all?
Not at the moment, unfortunately. We delivered our report of Module B to the government of Alberta, and they are the ones who will decide when they would like it to be shared publicly. And as of an update that I got from government just last week, they have no immediate plans to share, but that could change. So right now, we're not so sure.
Again, one more thing for us to advocate on behalf of Albertans, for the government to make those decisions and bring them out, so. Okay, are there any further questions? If not, I'm going to say thank you very much for your time and your patience with us in responding to our questions. Very much appreciate you, Richard, and you, Kim, being here with us today. And we are very grateful for the time that you've taken to help us get a better understanding of the process and certainly be able to better represent to our repairs the process and how we need to go about moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much for having us. We look forward to your participation in our upcoming Rule Seven consultation. And of course, this isn't the end of the conversation. If there are any questions that come up from your constituents or anyone on the council, please do not hesitate to reach out to us because we want to be a resource for yourselves and for, for your residents whenever we can.
Thank you for that, and I'm sure that, given opportunity, we will be participating.
That's great.
Thank you again.
I'll thank you again.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Have a great rest of your day, thank you very much.
I know.
Bye bye. Okay, I'm gonna suggest we take a ten minute recess. I need to reset my mind and refresh my tea. So we're in recess too, I'm gonna say eleven twenty, so. Okay, it is 11:20. And I am gonna call the Cal meeting of April 16th back to order. And we are going back to 2.1, which is vegetation cutting request and service level review. And I know you all did your homework while we were listening to AUC. And you contemplated what you wanted to say and what direction we wanted to give to both Ms. Fallon, Sherlock, and to our senior administration regarding vegetation cutting. So Ms. Sherlock, if you wanna just give us again, where are we? We are talking about cemeteries and community centers, so.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So what we have brought before the committee as a whole, just as a recap, is proposed, the, the current program costs for the vegetation programming, the four cemeteries that we currently mow that pay the $200 annually, each cemetery. And options for whether the rates for those particular sites stay the same or change as for the options presented, as well as the request that came from the Wimborne Community Center. And the other included in this table are the other community centers in hamlets that we have outlined, due to the fact that we are already in said hamlets, providing the service on our own land. And the fact that the Huxley Hall and Curling Rink is already taking place at no charge within our current program. So what we are looking for from the committee is the kind of final direction as to with the cemeteries, whether they would like to see the rates adjusted. We have heard that some adjustment may be necessary, but to do some consultation with the appropriate owners and groups to see what affordability may be there. As well as with the community centers, specific to hamlets, seeing that, seeing that there is, if there is a, a service that we come back with, what a regular fee would be, plus an extra on-call fee for that. So is there any further comments?
No, thank you for that. We did have a motion that was being made at the time we were coming to the end of that conversation. And of course, it had to be complicated by additional information. However, that's probably not a bad thing. So I believe Counselor Penner, you're moving in the direction that we direct administration to investigate not only mowing, but based on some information from transportation, snow removal agreements with the rural community halls within Neale County. And I guess at the time, I was trying to get clarification whether that was specific to the ones within our hamlets or whether that was broader scope than just the four that are within our hamlets. So Counselor Penner?
Right, and, and that's my thoughts. But being we're already in those hamlets, I think it's two different things, to be honest with you. This, it, it's the community halls within our hamlets within Neale County is the one, but, and but maybe it can all be in one, what you bring back.
Well, just because of the proximity of those community halls within the hamlet makes it easy to consider, we're already clearing snow in a hamlet. We're already mowing in a hamlet. And so proximity makes that potential possibility greater and at lower cost than if we had to transport and move to a more remote location, so. So is, is that, is that what you want your motion to say? And then I'll entertain some further discussion.
I'm fine with that, because we're just considering it. They're bringing back information.
Okay. All right, so we are looking for administration to bring back additional information regarding that particular possibility. Yeah, I'm just waiting till we kind of get that nailed down. Okay, yeah. Just. Okay, so can we just be specific to the first motion, which is that we're just talking about mowing and snow removal in rural, for the rural community halls within Neale County hamlets? So that's the only motion that's in front of us at this point in time? Nope. So I would like to leave the private cemetery discussion out of this first motion, if we could, please? Thank you for that, Carolyn, I appreciate that. So this motion is specific to the four community halls within our hamlets, Huxley, Wimborne, Squawal, and Dorton. And what we are asking is, we're recommending to council to consider mowing snow and, mowing and snow removal agreements. And so my expectation is that administration would be bringing back policy to help us determine whether we're going to do that or not. And I'm looking for head nodding from Mr. Hogan and Mr. Gannon and the person who complicated it, Mr. Zier. And of course Fallon, Ms. Sherlock, you're sitting right here in front of us. So who, Mr. Gannon, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you through the chair. I, I believe that we can bring the options back to Cal for consideration, but as far as a, a formal agreement process, I think that we may have some recommendations or options to that, but the formal agreement obviously would have to come in front of council for adoption.
Okay, so I guess my understanding of what we're, we're asking for right at this point in time is that we're expecting that administration is going to bring back policy and direction for how we might go about doing this and what that might look like in terms of conversation after you've had that with the various hall boards. And Mr. Zier, you want to comment?
Yes, through the chair, exactly that, as well as impacts to our service levels currently and if there is any projected costs on, on that equipment, that sort of thing. All, all be included in the analysis, excuse me, for council to review.
Keeping in mind that you did throw the snow removal into this conversation, so. What, we were talking about ice throw earlier? So, so I just wanna be sure that everyone understands what we're asking for here, both on the administrative side and us as council, if we're voting for this motion, what our expectation will be going forward. And that is that we'll expect to see some further direction coming back to us at council. Okay, we're good? Counselor folks?
Yes, please.
I guess it's the, I know, sorry, Mr. Zier. You're bringing back the road use agreement for doing snow plowing in June, I believe. So that's why I'm just, I'm hesitant to the adding the snow to this. That's the only reason why I'm hesitant, because I know that I've seen it, it's coming in June. So are, will that also include this discussion about, see what I'm laying down?
Remember, you got yourself into this.
No, and, and, and very good point, through the chair. The intent is to come back with a recommendation for, for private snow plow.
The intent is to come back with a recommendation for, for private snowplow and grading services that we have for our rural residents. So how that impacts that, there are going to be some marriages on that, but they are separate items as well.
Okay. So again, I'm just, I'm, I don't want to push us into a decision here, but if we're ready, I'm going to ask the question, because we have yet to go back, circle around to the cemetery side of things, so. Are we clear? Are we ready for the question? Okay, so the motion reads that council, that the committee of the whole recommend to council consider mowing and snow removal agreements with the rural community halls within our Neill County hamlets. Okay, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. We now have to move on to address the cemetery issue. And my understanding where we had ended up is that, again, we're going to have conversation with the four cemeteries that we currently are mowing with the $200 a year agreement in place, and that we're looking to update that agreement. So there's a clear understanding of what we are prepared to provide, and to have some conversation around what a new fee for that service might look like. That's where I understood we were in the conversation. So is someone needing more time to discuss? Or is someone prepared to make a motion that we move forward with that direction? Counselor Cunningham?
I was just going to say, yeah, and I think what I'm looking for too is just some information coming back from the conversations with those four cemeteries, like if they feel that they are able to bear a higher impact cost. That's kind of what I understood earlier, we were going to speak to, yeah.
Right, and that's what I had, and it may not just be with the locals, it might be with the higher up diocese, because those quite often get turned over, the local gets turned over to the next level in the diocese, so.
Okay, so again, what we're looking for is that administration will be coming back with more information for us from the managers, holders, owners of the cemeteries that we currently are mowing under contract to allow us to consider the development of a mowing of private cemetery level of service policy, basically. It's kind of where we're going. Okay, so we're all clear that that's kind of where we're going, and that's what we're asking for, and I think I see nodding both administratively and council-wise. So would someone care to make a motion to make that official? Counselor Forbes?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Cunningham?
I'm being real bare on this, but sorry, when I read the motion, I don't see anything that says after consultation with those entities.
I'll take that friendly amendment.
Or I don't know how you'd want to word it, but I'm just, I'm just not getting the consultation piece with those people, if that makes sense.
I, okay. I guess my understanding is the direction that we've given administration is that they will do that consultation, and that'll be a part of what's coming back. But if you want it in there, then that's not a problem. Okay, so the motion now reads that the committee of the whole recommend that council consider the development of, of a mowing of private cemetery level of service after consultation with the private cemetery, cemeteries. And we're not actually consulting with the private cemeteries, we're.
How about which includes the information from a private consultation?
I'll let you guys figure that one out. Okay. So now it just says after consultation with the private cemetery owners. And we're clear that it's the four cemeteries that we're currently mowing. Okay, all right. Okay, so any further discussion to the motion? We're clear? Clear as mud. Okay. I'm going to ask the question then, all those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sherlock, we appreciate your patience with us and your willingness to be here.
Thank you.
And we look forward to the, to policy directions coming back to council.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, and of course, we all understand that any of these changes are going to take time, and none of this will be implemented prior to 2025. And so we'll have to have some master rates by law changes, and I'm almost afraid to go there, but Mr. Gannon, please.
Thank you, I'm glad I install, I'm glad I install confidence. I just want to make sure that council understands that we're going to continue the same operation as we've done previously until we come back to council for decision.
Good clarification. All right. So, we ready to move on? I just want to be, I want to be sure. So the next item on our agenda is two point two, which is enterprise vehicle leasing. And it looks like, Mr. Zier, you are the presenter of this item, and I'm very much looking forward to what you have to bring to us this morning.
Very good, thank you for that. So yes, I think committee of the whole being a good venue for bringing these sort of identified options forward, this, we thought it'd be prudent to kind of inform council of what we're doing out there in the field, especially if you start seeing some changes to our fleets and that sort of thing, making sure if you get repair notices brought up, that you're informed of this ahead of time, so. So a little background, so we've been looking at alternatives. We're always constantly looking at our programs right now, seeing if there's efficiencies with how we handle our different projects we bring forward, and fleet management is a huge part of that. Looking at a lot of our conversations in the past here with capital equipment, life cycling of our equipment, the asset management tied to that, really important aspects that gardening and obtaining that data is fundamental in making our decisions going forward, so. So we saw this opportunity come up, actually, it's not the first time it's come to council or to the county, we've probably even, council probably has seen it before. We've looked at investigating vehicle leasing in the past. In the past, there's been quite a few restrictions on items such as vehicle modifications. The costs were quite a bit different at that time, limits on kilometers, all those sort of things, kind of, when we investigated in the past here, deemed that that wasn't attractive enough to move forward with that project. So we met with this company last year, end of last year, and just kind of looked at the new programs that they have in place. I think we can say that we're comfortable enough with the changes that have been made to that to put forward a pilot project on it. So we've been talking with the company over the last few months, and are just finalizing the agreements as we speak to bring forward a pilot on this with some of our fleet units, so. So in the capital budget, we have five half-ten pickups to be replaced. Enterprise is able to replace those. I guess just a little bit of, and there's a PowerPoint included in your package here too, I won't go into detail, that was supplied by the company there. But basically, we're looking at this as, there's lots of projections out there as far as cost savings, as far as maintenance programs, all which could play a really important part in our future decision-making. But we want to do that analysis ourselves, we don't want to necessarily rely on what's worked for other communities or other organizations, because in the counterparts I've talked to, some have found success in this, some have found challenges. So we see it as a good enough positive to move forward, at least in this small scale right now. So some of the benefits that this company can do, so we'll be bringing in new vehicles. We've cycled, sorry, we've designated them to a range of different kilometer usage. So some of our vehicles that we're bringing in are going to go for high kilometer users, some low, so we can kind of garner and gauge the success of it through that. As well, we're putting in a vehicle locating program with this, and a maintenance program, so they're going to be tied to GPS, which monitors the vehicles all the way through their lifespan, looking at, I mean, we have that on our other vehicles to begin with, but this one ties a little bit deeper into the actual use of the vehicle, the maintenance scheduling of it, making sure that those are sent out to our employees to make sure that they're all covered. What a really important part of that program is that Enterprise also monitors it for us. So part of this program is they will be watching the use of these vehicles, and really, we'll be meeting periodically to decide if we need to cycle these vehicles through the different departments, if it's becoming a more opportune time to dispose of them. Right now, we have half-ton trucks on a seven-year cycle, and that may be the best way to go through them right now. Buying a $60,000 truck and selling it for under 10 may be the best route, but we haven't tried any other routes. We have asset management in place right now that is going to be reviewing both this program and our existing program with some of the new vehicles we bought, and kind of doing a comparison on those two, to see if, if recycling these vehicles earlier makes it a more beneficial to the county, retaining that value and disposing them at an earlier rate, rather than running them to the end and really getting very limited funds for disposal of that. So like I say, all these things are speculative at this point, but I think this is a really neat program that we're going to be looking at and actually seeing if it works the best for the county, so.
Okay, questions, Counselor Forbes?
How long will the pilot project run for?
So right now, we're looking at a couple segments, there's a four-year, sorry, a five-year term, looking at cycling some of the lower mileage vehicles in four years. We have a couple of them that they're predicting we're probably going to cycle them in the first couple of years, because they have such high mileage on that. So we'll be able to do an analysis on that in the short term already, to see what the value we get back on those.
Counselor Penner?
By going this way, does it lower or raise our insurance?
Through the chair, I don't believe so, I don't see any, we have talked with our insurance company, and they're aware of this program. Like I say, we're not the first ones in on this, there's quite a few, there's 27 municipalities right now that do it in Alberta. From what I see, we don't lower insurance rates because of that.
Counselor Penner?
So I guess another question is to do with maintenance. I see on their little presentation there, and like you said, they will be monitoring that too, how, because they're doing, should something major appear, are we doing all the maintenance, or is there certain aspects of the problem or level of an issue that they will deal with?
Yeah, so through the chair, the program allows both options. Both, we can sign on as a registered repair facility under their program, and we can actually, that was part of the restrictions in the past, that we're sending vehicles away to Drumheller or farther to get minor things done. This new program, they allow us to register as that, and we will register as an approved facility for repairs. Same thing, these are new vehicles, so a lot of the warranty work, we will still send out, just like we would any other vehicle, but some of the oil changes and that sort of thing, we have the option of doing them in-house or outside as well.
Counselor Penner?
Sorry. You're asking my question, so go ahead. Does it make a difference with Enterprise here? Is it like 100,000 kilometers or a timeframe for that warranty? Does it, is it always the same as just buying them at the dealer?
Yeah, through the chair, it is the exact same warranty period, the powertrain warranties are all the same with them. So part of the program here is a maintenance program with them, where they are monitoring that and covering the costs of the repairs on that. They are higher for the higher mileage vehicles, because obviously they get more maintenance through their lifespan there. And like I say, I think we're starting off small here to try these out, because some of these things are unknowns, as far as what we're viewing, what that actual true cost is. Again, comparing them to buying vehicles, running them through, because there's a lot of maintenance that we've seen, you'll see in our last budget here. The cost of repairs and maintenance parts on these sort of things has skyrocketed, so. That's a real driver in our decisions on these. Yes, we're going to have newer vehicles on there, and the perception, that's why I really want to make sure council is aware of this. The perception is that we're maybe not being as efficient as we could be, but looking at what hopefully our projections come back with this of disposing those vehicles and not, and running them through a lower maintenance program at the same time will hopefully come out in the end as a positive.
Counselor Forbes?
I have a couple of questions, and you know you're going to get this one. And I'm just going to ask it, because I know it's going to come to me, it has in the past. Do we currently customize our vehicles? Do you see what I'm saying? Because people, and the perception is, is we're getting these big fancy vehicles. My husband leases one for his company, so I understand that this is the model that came to us, he didn't customize it. So just for clarity for anyone who's listening, we are not customizing these vehicles, so for resale value at the end, so we're not putting on extra lovely wheel wells and extra things for this and that, because this is a question I've gotten, true story.
So Mr. Zier?
Yeah, and through the chair, we do outfit our vehicles with the components we need to complete the work. So you'll see a lot of our vehicles, obviously have safety lights installed. We actually have, are standardizing them right now, we're kind of go through a program to standardize our emergency lights on all of our vehicles. You'll see a lot of them have headache racks and that sort of thing, so we can carry different styles of pipe, or whatever we need to do on that. It is, they are pretty standardized as far as what we're looking at for equipping these vehicles, so they do have, I mean, fire extinguishers, all that kind of stuff. So that is customizing to a point, and that's one thing we want to make sure with this company is that we were able to do that without losing a lot of value. And they basically give us, well, they say carte blanche, because we, we are able to sell them, and it's their, it's our attention as well, as far as how much we customize them, that may limit the value. So we're aware of that, and trying to limit as much as we can.
Counselor Forbes?
In your opinion, do you believe that over an extended period, leasing may cost more than buying due to the continuous lease payments?
Yeah, and through the chair, like I say, I can't accurately answer that right now, because, and that's why I'm deeming this as a pilot project, and not looking at multi-year purchasing. You look at some of the communities out there have replaced their entire fleet with leasing options. And if you listen to the company, that's been very beneficial for them. And that's why I say, look in the projections that are presented to us, I want to do our own analysis. I want to make sure we know what's right for Neill County on this, and not necessarily what's worked for others. Because others have different age of fleets, others have, a lot of push on this is fuel mileage and the improvements in that, improvements in safety technology with backup cameras, Bluetooth, and all that sort of thing, that these new vehicles come in, that's a lot of the push of that. Our vehicles aren't necessarily as old as some other ones, as some other municipalities, so. What works for one may not work for others, kind of what I'm saying.
Mr. Hogan?
The theme is to try to build on what Ms. Zier has said. You know, the crux of this is that in the past, the way the program was structured, and this is an RMA-supported program as well, through their group. When we do, there's the analysis the company does, then we do an internal analysis. Our internal analysis has been in the past that this isn't, the numbers don't make sense for us yet on this. With the changes to the program that Mr. Zier has outlined, the internal analysis, hey, the numbers might make sense. And so that's why we want, that's why we decided, let's try it on a pilot basis, because then we can get true cost, and we'll know after that whether or not this is, as Mike Zier said, the right program for Neill County. There's different ways this can, this can go out, but the crux of it is we're, it looks like the numbers make sense, we want to see if they prove out. And if they do, we're going to have the opportunity to expand the program to a lot of benefit. If they don't... If they don't, then we'll know, right? And we'll go there. But we think it's close enough that it's worth the try, based on that internal analysis, which hasn't existed in the past. One of the things to, to go back to your customization question, and this is important to know, is because we're dealing with a company that's North America-wide, they have a purchasing capacity and a sales capacity that we generally don't have or have access to. So you might see vehicles, well, not might, you likely will see vehicles, as Mr. Zier said, rotating out faster. And that's looking at the lifecycle costing of them, is there might be a payment upfront, but you might get a lot more residual value. You know, I'm not going to go into, pretend to be an expert on Enterprise's resale, but I know they have access to North, to American markets, which are paying very well on top of an exchange rate. So there is opportunity there that they might have to maximize that. What you might see is, based on their advice and what's reselling or what's retaining its value, I go back to that customization question, there might not be a pure customization, but you might see a truck show up with a package above what the county would normally buy, and that might be being done because of the assessment of the resale value that's going to have versus the other package at the end of life. So you might see things like that occur as part of the program, too. So it's just kind of a heads up on that front. We're not intentionally specking higher vehicles, but based on some of the advice we get from Enterprise, who runs North American wide fleet management programs, it might be actually cheaper to do that because of what we're seeing as a salvage value at the end.
Counselor Forbes.
And of course, this will come back to budget because this is not something that was included in our 2024 budget. So when, how does that part going to work? Is my, going to be my question.
So the trucks that we're, the trucks that we're doing this on were included in budget.
Okay, but they weren't included with leasing? That's what a question I'm going to get.
No, so the, what we had in budget was approval to replace a number of vehicles. This is how we're replacing them under this pilot project, but we're not doing any additional replacements.
Yeah, that's why I needed the clarity.
Fair question. Counselor Christie.
I guess my question would be, at least a couple of vehicles. This is like a fleet arrangement, but have you gone directly to the dealers for a fleet arrangement rather than have Enterprise in there, or is that an option through RMA?
Contracted through.
If you go to like Shaw GMC Lease or somebody like that, rather than a rental company, you got an extra step in there for me.
Fair enough. So yeah, I think, I believe Enterprise, because we're moving forward with this because it is regulated through Canoe, we, I mean, Enterprise, like Mr. Hogan has said, as a wide area that they cover and they're able to obtain vehicles from across the country for this. So it is a potential, possibly, that there's another option out there. We did look at this one as being our focus right now.
Okay, no, just a question, because I know that we've leased from two different companies, and one is completely different from the other one.
Okay.
So Counselor McGee.
Very petty question, but I think it is important to ask. If these are Enterprise vehicles, will they have their logo anywhere on the vehicle?
Through the chair, that's a really good point, a really good question. Definitely, we're able to deckle them as much as they do. I'm not sure if they will have a small deckle on any of their, I can confirm that if you like.
So the question that I would have is, we having entered into this pilot project with Enterprise for the trucks that we're replacing in the 2024 plan, so because it's a pilot and it's going to be a period of evaluation, is the intention in the capital equipment replacement plan for next year's trucks that they would be included in something like this, or they would be outside of this? So because we're not going to have the data to say whether this is more advantageous or not in one year, are we thinking that we would, next year, let's say we're replacing four trucks next year, the four half-tons we're getting next year, would they come through Enterprise, or we're going to go back to our regular procurement method? Just, again, I don't have any objections one way or another, but I would just like to have the clarification.
Yeah, so through the chair, the intent was not to bring forward any more vehicles until we had a better analysis of the benefits of this. And like you mentioned, it probably isn't going to be obtained by the end of the year. I'm looking at 2026 for the next segment of this, if we do continue on with the program.
And part of that might be driven by the fact you might only have two-year timeframe on some of those vehicles because of the high mileage, and they want to flip them and turn them over?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
So just having had my ratepayer meeting yesterday, I can say that fleet management and the optics of the county running around with new vehicles came up more than once yesterday, so it is an interesting topic. So I think Reeve King pretty much answered my questions, but I know Mr. Hogan, as it was worth a try, and I mean, that is a pilot project, so I just wanted to ensure like for our ratepayers that this project wasn't going to cost them any more than what was allotted in the 2024 budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, and through the chair, I can confirm that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Like I think, key to me is that it's worth evaluating, and I guess I'm looking at you, Ms. Zier, and the homework that you've done in terms of evaluating the opportunity that's here in front of us, and in recognition of the fact that we are going to be monitoring where this takes us, that I'm more than happy to say, yeah, let's give it a go. I mean, ultimately, it could save us money in Laura, it might not, but we need to know whether that's there or not. And so by running a pilot like this, we have a chance to figure those things out, so.
Yeah, so through the chair, exactly right. I think the analysis that we're going to do is going to be pretty, pretty in-depth. And just looking at, what I'm really focusing on is the knowledge and experience and market presence that Enterprise brings into this conversation, hoping that they can deliver on some of the promises that they're putting out there.
Well, I guess we're somewhat relying on Canoe procurement group as well in the recommendation that they're making. So rural municipalities of Alberta have evaluated Enterprise and what they offer in terms of fleet management, and have given them some sort of endorsement anyway for us to consider. And so I guess that has some value to me, too, looking at a program like that, to say there's maybe some opportunity there that we need to just look at and say, does it work for Neill County or does it not? So. Okay, Counselor Cunningham, sorry.
Yeah, no worries. So just part of your analysis, and I know all this takes time, but it was mentioned that there was 27 other municipalities that were currently using them. It would be really interesting to talk to municipalities of similar size and just find out from their experiences if it's worked for them, if they do it differently, if they do it again. And like I said, I know that all takes time, but I think, like Reeve King said, if RMA is behind it, I mean, I think we're pretty confident in that, but I'd always be interested to hear from other municipalities on how it's working for them or not working, or what they do different going forward, so just thought to.
I think the other thing that I would put into the whole conversation is, the goals and objectives of each municipality are somewhat different. And so, yeah, I'd be very interested in hearing how it's working for other municipalities based on what they are looking to get out of the program. But ultimately, in the end, I'm glad that we're not just going to assume that because it works for them, it works for us, and we're actually going to do our own evaluation and say, does this work? It might not. It might, and if it does, then great. If it doesn't, let's move on to the next option, right? So. Any other comments or discussion? Counselor Forbes.
Just because we'll be going to a leasing effect, you're taking into consideration the vehicles we would no longer own in, as assets, that would be sold at the end of their life. So are you taking the selling of those vehicles as well into the cost of the leasing? Because at the end of the vehicles we currently own, we can sell them, and that goes into reserves for replacement value. We're not going to have that if we go to a leasing. So have you all, because I'm going to get this question, do we consider the loss of those, that those assets no longer belonging to us?
Through the chair, 100%. We're looking at the maintenance all the way through, we're going to go into the fuel economy savings, we're going to look at even the downtime for each of these vehicles that we have lost to the repairs and that sort of thing, trying to get as much in-depth analysis as we can on these things. Part of the program is actually going to be installing this maintenance mind around a couple of our older vehicles as well, just kind of do the apples-to-apples comparison on that, so we can see what the maintenance on those older vehicles is compared to the new ones. So trying to get a full range of review on it.
Okay, Counselor McGee.
I'd like to make the motion that we receive the update on the Enterprise vehicle leasing program as information, and I also would like to thank administration and Mike for the great work you're trying to do, to create other ways that we can be more prudent with our funding, funds and our dollars. I think our residents have a great staff that does constantly look at these brilliant new ideas, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion that the committee of the whole received the update on the Enterprise vehicle leasing program as information. Is there any other discussion related to the motion? Any other discussion? If not, I'm going to ask the question, which is all in favor. That's carried unanimously, and again, I'll just add my thanks, Mr. Zier, for bringing this to us and keeping us informed so that we can keep our ratepayers informed as to what's happening here within the county. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your time this morning.
Very good, thank you.
So I've had a request for a brief recess, so we're going to take five minutes. So we're in recess to 12:07, and then we have one item under closed session, and then we will be done, so. Okay, I'm going to call the committee of the whole meeting back to order, and just before we do the closed session, I would look for a motion to receive the AUC delegation presentation for information. Counselor Christie? So moved. Thank you for that. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda is closed session under section 16, third-party business interests. And I look for a motion to go, Counselor Forbes.
I'd move this into closed session.
So we have a motion to go into closed section, session, under section 16, third-party business interests. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. We are going to recess. Okay, so we had a motion to return to open session at 12:24. We recessed briefly to allow the return of the gallery and to get the live stream back active. It is now 12:26, and our meeting is resumed. There are no motions coming out of our discussion around section 16 and third-party business interests. And so the next item on our agenda is the one many of us look forward to every meeting, and that's a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned at 12:26. Thank you for your time and attention and your participation in today's meeting. Very much appreciated.